Good evening. It is Wednesday, June 11th, 2025. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I propose to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
Here.
Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner? Ms. Sharma?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 25th, 2024, and June 6th, 2025 at all schools on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our closed session resolution. Whereas the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed in Section 12b of the Act, and whereas that the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed, pending or anticipated litigation matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, matters involving employees and their terms of their employment and contract, hip investigation involving students, superintendent's evaluation, Donaldson hearing, and settlement agreements involving students. Numbers are referenced on the agenda. Be it further resolved that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist. Action may be taken on any of the items stated above. Can I have a motion to go?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
For the members of the public who are here, the board is going to be in executive session for approximately 45 minutes to an hour. No formal action will be taken in executive session. To the extent that any formal action is taken, it will be taken out here in public at the conclusion or after the conclusion of executive session. Thank you.
Okay, the board should return from executive session around at 7:15. Okay, the board has returned from their closed session. I would like to... Is there a motion to close the closed session meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boris, second by Ms. Alvarez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Make a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
Motion by Mr. Payne.
Second.
Second by Mr. Piero. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I would like to make a motion.
Ms. Alvarez?
I would like to make a motion to make Dr. Lee Mindy Acting Superintendent retroactive to May 6th.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payne. Questions or comments?
I would like to table this motion till we've had the discussion on the current superintendent, which is supposed to be at the tail end of this meeting. So my suggestion to the board is that this motion can be made at that time based on whatever discussions and actions are taken at that time. If the need is still there, we could make the motion to make... So that's my... I would like to make a motion to table this motion.
Okay, so Ms. Bora made a motion while a motion is pending.
Second.
So the motion to table, so long as we had Mr. Tufano's second, which I just heard, the motion to table takes precedence over the motion that's currently pending. So we're going to vote now on the motion to table by Ms. Bora. Are there questions or discussions on the motion to table?
No. Okay.
Sina.
So, Ms. Allen, please.
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
No.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstained due to conflict?
Ms. Sharma?
No.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
No.
Ms. Fabiano?
No.
Motion does not pass.
So now we're back to the motion to appoint Dr. Lehman as the acting superintendent. Did you say retroactive? Retroactive to May 6th.
Excuse me, Mr. Weiss. Do I have a question? So this means when we appoint Dr. Lehman, we're going to have to draw up a contract where he'll be getting paid the same amount of money as Mrs. Chanley, who was on paid leave. So now we're going to have two superintendents with a high salary? Is that what we're doing?
Not necessarily, Mr. Tufano. The issue is that the board has a policy that says that when a superintendent is incapacitated, that an acting superintendent should be appointed. In that policy, the policy defines incapacity as include... It includes a superintendent who's on suspension. And so there's a school of thought that says that an acting superintendent should be appointed. However, kind of the contra to that is that in the assistant superintendent's job description, it has a line item that says that the assistant superintendent is to perform the role and function of the superintendent in the absence of the superintendent. So it's my legal opinion that this motion is not legally necessary because the assistant superintendent job description contains that line item. Nevertheless, if we were to consider this as a belt and suspenders move, the board certainly can vote to appoint Dr. Lehman as acting. It would be a formality only because it's my opinion that he already serves in that capacity by virtue of his job description.
I have another question for Mr. Weiss, Ms. Madam President.
Yes.
Given my initial hesitation to put this motion at the end of the night, so now if something changes with the situation with Dr. Chanley, we've appointed Dr. Lehman as the acting at the end of this motion, how does that... Does it automatically, you know, reword at whatever time Dr. Chanley is back?
Yeah. To the... Yes. The short answer to your question is yes, because there would be a...
No formative action of the board needed for that?
I would suggest that the board formally, you know, the board would formally reinstate the superintendent. And so by virtue of that, I would say that the acting superintendent title is extinguished. But again, if the board wanted to be doubly sure that there's no issue when the board reinstates Dr. Chanley, it could at the same time end Dr. Lehman's acting status, acting superintendent status.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms... Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstained due to conflict?
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our board minutes. The first minutes for approval are our Public Board of Education meeting minutes from May 5th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Mr. Piero. Questions or comments about the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay, the next minutes for approval are the closed session meeting minutes from May 5th, 2025.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Bora. Any questions or comments on the closed session minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or recusals?
Just abstention on the portion where conflict exists.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Report. And before we get started, I do want to recognize that... Sayhaj, this is your last meeting with us as our student board member. So I do have a plaque here for you that I'm just going to read what it says. Whereas Sayhaj Chata has served with distinction on the Monroe Township Board of Education, and whereas through her leadership, the Monroe Township Board of Education has gained fresh insights into student com... Student... Looks like cut off. Into student priorities and what is on the mind of young people in the community. And whereas she has further contributed to the community by serving as a valuable spokesperson sharing the student perspective at board meetings. And whereas Sayhaj's exemplary commitment to fellow students and the school district has promoted her clear communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body. And whereas Sayhaj has maintained a professional decorum at board meetings, showed respect to the board members, and strives to learn proper... Learn the proper etiquette of serving on the school board. And whereas she has demonstrated a commitment to advancing the education of all students without neglecting her own responsibility to strive for success in the classroom. Now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education recognizes Sayhaj's dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body. And further be it resolved that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education extend their sincere appreciation to Sayhaj for her dedicated service to the Monroe Township Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education extend their best wishes to Sayhaj in all of her future endeavors.
I just want to say thank you all so much. I've learned so much by being on this board, and it's really, really been an honor and a pleasure to serve Monroe Township. I can't wait to come back and visit. And I know Siona and the future Junior Board of Ed representative are going to be so amazing as well. So thank you for giving me this opportunity and for treating me with such kindness and respect along the way.
And now your final report.
And with that, let's begin our report for today. We're beginning with Barclaybrook Elementary School. Barclaybrook held a tech expo in May that brought together students, families, and educators for an evening of hands-on exploration and innovation. Attendees engaged with interactive stations featuring tools like Lego We Do, Osmo, Code.org, and robots such as Photon and Root, which showcased the fun of coding and engineering. Thank you to the Barclaybrook staff who planned and organized the fun night. Barclaybrook students participated in Unified Field Day events this May. One hosted for preschool students at Barclaybrook on May 8th and another district-wide celebration on May 27th. Both events were filled with energetic activities like relay races and parachute play, all focused on teamwork, joy, and connection. Thank you to all the staff members who designed and organized these memorable and meaningful experiences that celebrated unity, acceptance, and the power of inclusion. Barclaybrook's 2nd graders and Brookside 4th graders came together for a Book Buddies event filled with reading, conversation, and creative activities. Each student was paired with a buddy, building connections through shared experiences. The event helped ease the upcoming transition to Brookside and strengthen the bond between the two schools. Barclaybrook continued its partnership with Parker at Monroe as residents visited Barclaybrook for a special STEM activity with the 1st grade class. Together, students and residents explored the Ozmo Monster, an interactive learning game that combines hands-on drawing with digital animation. Using an iPad and Osmo's reflective technology, they're drawing kind to life on the screen, creating a magical experience that encouraged creativity, storytelling, and meaningful intergenerational connections.
Moving on to Brookside Elementary School, the 3rd and 4th graders had great experiences at their field trips. The 3rd grade attended the Six Flags Safari in Jackson Township, and the 4th grade visited Cornelius Low House and Old Town Village in Piscataway. The band and chorus students did an incredible job performing at the spring concert recently. The concert took place on June 2nd at the middle school. Brookside held its 3rd annual Brookside Day on June 5th, and the day was a huge success. Students from the different grade levels worked together on activities in the morning. And following these activities, the students had a picnic lunch and a pep rally to follow. Brookside held its annual Field Day on June 6th, and the students had such a fun time. It was great to see them actively participate in all of the outdoor games. And lastly, Brookside's Moving Up Ceremony will take place on Wednesday, June 18th. Congratulations to all of Brookside's 5th graders.
And now let's move on to Mill Lake Elementary School. Mill Lake proudly participated in two unforgettable district-wide unified events, uniting students from pre-K to grade 12 in the spirit of inclusion and celebration. They thanked the school district unified coordinators for making this possible. Their field days were filled with fun and teamwork. The school thanks Mrs. Lombard, Mrs. Nigel, and the amazing parent volunteers for making them a success. They also celebrated the incredible 3rd graders and all of their amazing students during this week's, this month's ACL assembly. Two outstanding student presentations were featured. One came from the Stand Up/Stand In group founded by 8-year-old Mallory Stankywex with compassion and courage well beyond her years. Mallory launched this powerful initiative to promote inclusion, kindness, and standing up to bullying. Mrs. Ling also had a fantastic recorder concert that showcased what's possible through hard work and dedication. A special shout-out to the fabulous Falcon, Leila, who reached the highest level of achievement. This month also showcased the generosity of Mill Lake. Thanks to Mrs. Walter and Ms. Papandria, they raised funds and awareness for leukemia and blood disorders in an effort rooted in heart and human community spirit. Throughout the year, Mill Lake Student Council focused on two guiding themes: inclusivity and kindness. Open to all 3rd graders, the council provided opportunities for leadership, connection, and service through monthly meetings and school-wide initiatives. Highlights included Supporting Childhood and Breast Cancer Awareness Months, creating a cereal box maze that led to the donation of hundreds of cereal boxes to local food plantries, and making heartfelt cards for senior citizens. The council also energized the school with Spirit Weeks, frightening the scrouns by planting flowers in the Mill Lake garden and showing important summer sun safety tips. Thank you to the advisors, Mrs. Lane, Mrs. Susan, and Mrs. Papandria. There is still so much to share, but the school also wants to take a moment to thank and recognize the heartbeat of Mill Lake, the exceptional staff. Their unwavering dedication, compassion, and selflessness shown through in everything they do. Every single team member is deeply valued and appreciated. Mill Lake would not be the same without them.
Moving on to Woodland Elementary School, the Woodland celebrated Staff Appreciation Week in May. Students shared handwritten thank-you notes expressing gratitude for the hard work and dedication of their amazing staff. Dr. Chetta also provided small treats to show her gratitude for the staff as the principal. Finally, the Woodland Mill Lake PTO made the week extra special with daily surprises and thoughtful treats that truly lifted spirits and brought smiles all around. Students visited the PTO-sponsored flower shop where they selected beautiful plants and flowers to take home, perfect gifts to brighten up their family's homes and welcome the new season. The lunch professionals have been leading an engaging and healthy initiative, the walking club. Students are tracking their steps and reaching exciting landmark goals along the way. With each milestone, they can earn fun prizes, encouraging both fitness and friendly motivation. Ms. Hire and Ms. Noonan, visual art teachers at Woodland and Mill Lake, coordinated an art show that highlighted the imagination and artistic talents of their K-5 students. The event celebrated cultural exploration through artwork inspired by a variety of places around the world. Adding to the evening's event, families were also treated to a beautiful performance by the Woodland School Chorus. The Unified Students had an exciting and memorable experience participating in Field Day at Monroe Township High School. The event brought together students from across the district for a day filled with fun, teamwork, and inclusive activities that celebrated friendship, sportsmanship, and school spirit. The talented band and chorus students recently took the stage to perform their spring concert for both the students in the school and families. This year, they had a special performance showcasing the school's musical talents for the rising 4th graders when they visited from Mill Lake this month. Mr. Schultz went above and beyond to organize a fun and engaging Field Day filled with a variety of exciting activities. His thoughtful planning and enthusiastic leadership helped create a very memorable experience that fostered teamwork, laughter, and school spirit.
Oak Tree Hares also had a bunch of special events happening in the past two weeks. On June 3rd was their annual Field Day. June 4th was a Mix It Up Lunch Celebration Day. June 5th was a Healthy Living Night and Grade 3 Tours at Apple Garth. And June 11th is going to be Kindergarten's Moving Up Celebration Day. And June 18th is Grade 3's Moving Up Celebration. Congratulations to all the 3rd graders.
Next up is the middle school. Congratulations to the 6th grade chorus, concert bands, and jazz ensemble for competing in the Music in the Parks Festival on Friday, May 9th. The chorus, overture band, and purple jazz ensemble were each awarded first place in their respective divisions, with the fanfare band taking a very close second. Additionally, Ishan Yeol was awarded the top soloist in his category. The 6th grade chorus is directed by Ms. Lisa Costantino. The overture band is directed by Mr. David Ratner. The fanfare band is directed by Mr. Samuel Schneider. And the purple jazz ensemble is directed by Mr. Rick Funzheim. On May 20th, the band director from Jamesburg Middle School and his 14 band students visited the middle school 8th grade band classes as part of a new collaboration between the schools to help with the middle school and high school transition. They were invited to play a piece with the students at the middle school at Monroe for the May 28th Spring Band Concert. This Friday, June 13th, the middle school will be hosting its annual 8th grade dance. This is always a great night, and the students have a lot of fun. Tuesday, June 17th, the middle school will hold its 8th grade award ceremony, and this is always a proud event for the parents and students. Wednesday, June 18th, the middle school will hold its 8th grade graduation, the culmination of three years of hard work by the students. Information for all 8th grade events has gone home to the 8th grade families. The middle school music department participated in their annual Dorney Park Trip and competition, and the kids had an amazing day. They achieved the following recognition. For band 7th grade band earned 3rd place and an excellent rating, and the 8th grade band earned a 1st place and superior rating. A lot of hard work and a lot of good rankings. And the 7th and 8th grade combined chorus also won 1st place, superior rating, and that's not it, best overall chorus, best student accompanist, and best student soloist as well.
And last but not least, we're moving on to the high school now. Spring sports has come to a close, which means that finals week is about to begin at Monroe Township High School. Good luck to all the high schoolers on their exams. Next week, on June 20th, Monroe Township High School is celebrating the outgoing class of 2025. Congratulations to all of the high school seniors on their 12-year endeavor through education. We are wishing you the best to come. I'd like to especially recognize my fellow student representatives, Sayhaj Chata, for all of your hard work as a student representative for a district of over 2,000 students. I, as well as many others, are looking forward to seeing this next chapter in your life.
Thank you, Siona. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening and rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much, both of you, and I hope you guys have a wonderful summer and best of luck in college. I wish you will miss you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our presentations. Our first one is our retiree recognition.
Sure. And before we transition there, I just wanted to say something to Sayhaj. Thanks on behalf of Dr. Chanley and myself. I know you've committed time here in the evenings, but you also are a member of our Student Liaison Committee amongst all of your other engagements. And truly thank you for your contributions to the entire school community. So thank you.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. It's been an honor.
So we do have two presentations tonight. The first one is recognizing our retirees, and it will be immediately followed by our second presentation of the spring, recognizing some of our students. So if you'd like to join us up front?
Good evening, everyone. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Lehman, Ms. Fabiano. And thank you for joining us, everyone, and coming out. This keeps dying on me. All right, let's try this again. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. It is a busy time of the year. And before we proceed with our monthly tradition of recognizing our students and staff, we want to take a moment to recognize a very... Another very special group of individuals, our retirees. June is always a very bittersweet time of the year. And as we say goodbye to our graduates in all of our schools that are moving up or moving out of our district, while we are excited to see them move on, we are also very sad to see them leave. The same goes for our retirees. And while everyone has their own walk of life in our district, they all make their own individual impact. And whether they are here tonight, in person, to be recognized, we would like to read their names regardless. So thank you to all of our retirees, everyone that came out tonight. So we will start with our retirees. From Transportation, starting with Kathleen McDonald.
Regina Markka, driver. Martin Poco, another driver. And finally, from Transportation retiring this year, Margaret Simone. Thank you to all of our drivers, maybe the hardest job in the district. Moving on to Brookside Elementary School, we have two retirees this year, starting with our lead custodian at Brookside, Catherine McLaughlin. And longtime paraprofessional Beverly Montessori. And I think she's here. I saw her earlier tonight. There she is.
Moving on to Mill Lake Elementary School, 1st grade teacher Sandra Cormy.
And also from Mill Lake, our basic skills teacher, Kathleen Sizik. All right, on to Oak Tree, 2nd grade teacher Terry Gross. And power professional Rosina Vento. At Woodland School, special education teacher Margaret Hopkins. Of course, 4th grade teacher Melanie Rehm. Now, the Monroe Township Middle School. This is an all-star lineup here. Starting with Principal Secretary Louise Baumann.
Security officer... Oh, excuse me. Security Officer Kathleen Heckard.
Teacher of Spanish Sylvia Gonzalez. School counselor Dana Overhein. And of course, the voice of the Monroe Township Middle School All Call, 12-month secretary, Ms. Amy Poehl.
Don't worry, Pat. I don't have a joke for you. Don't worry, Pat, I don't have a joke for you. And finally, from the middle school, paraprofessional Mary Vena. On to the Monroe Township High School, starting with longtime music director Marty Griffin. Special education teacher Carolyn McGory. And finally, longtime Woodland Security Officer and current high school security officer, And then finally, our district employees that hung it up this year, starting with our Director of Guidance, Dr. Michelle Cotelli. And finally, longtime Network Operations Manager, Industrial Arts Teacher, and many other tasks Congratulations and best of luck to all of our retirees. Thank you. All right, we're going to get right into the next presentation, and I'm going to move right along here. All right, here we go. So, we're going to jump right ahead. This year, or this month, I'm sorry, we are going to recognize students and staff that have had outstanding achievements in the athletics and other co- and extracurricular areas that have taken place in the late winter and the spring. And we will start off at the middle school, and I would like to introduce Dr. Jim Higgins.
Good evening. It's always great to honor our retirees. Unfortunately, half my main office retired on me today. It's fine, I'm not holding against you. Buy me a chicken paw, we're good. And the other piece is, anytime we honor students, it's always a wonderful night. So, we are going to get started. So, for our middle school history bee, these students qualified and participated in national competition in Orlando, so I would like to call up Arjun Baur. Faisal Jabair. Vihaan Kavari. Camila Lopez. Our middle school geography bee qualified and participated in national competition in Orlando, Florida. Arjun Baur. Faisal Jabair. And Aiden O'Neal. I'll make sure I catch them some. For our, this is really throwing me off, Monroe Township Public Library Nature Poetry Photography Contest, for first place, Sanya Tunani. And second place, Anika Kukorov. For our middle school science Olympia, we achieved third place in our regional competition and fifth place in the state competition. So, I would like to call these students up, and their advisors were Melissa Calantino and Nicole Gerges. Ashia Agawal. Arav Chitrana. Vedant Daga. Ruthree Sri, Harsh Kumar. Sejerin Kankala. Ishan Shah. Adwud Singh. Oh, I'm sorry, Anav Sumayosula. And last but not least, from Monroe Township Middle School, the middle school science bee, this student qualified and participated in national competition in Orlando, Florida, Okay, I'm now handing it off to the other Dr. Higgins from Monroe Township High School. Thank you, Dr. Higgins. Try to put this here, maybe it works a little better. I'm pleased to be joined tonight by a number of our advisors from our clubs to honor our students in their achievements in spring activities and sports. So, at this time, I would like to invite our advisors for FBLA, Mrs. Jennifer Solomon and Mr. Brian Keigho.
Good evening, everyone. Future Business Leaders of America is a nationally recognized organization where students can pursue their interest in business, philanthropy, and community outreach. Tonight, we're here to celebrate some exceptional individuals who placed at our state leadership conference. These are some of the best FBLA members in the state of New Jersey. Placing second in Battle of the Chapters, Nandini Khanam, Lasneet Kabar, and Vikram Winning the Gold Member Award, Ryan David. Second place in Who's Who in FBLA, Dewanee Benou. Our Gold Officer Award, Nandini Khanam.
And in second place for our America Enterprise Project, we have Dewanee Benou. Hafirmat. Vikram Raganoff. Second place for Intro to FBLA, we have Sai Palori. Third place in our Chapter Business Report, we have Arun Sumaran and Lasneet Kabar. Second place for Banking and Financial Systems, we have Aditya Avakar and Shubhan Bhai.
Third place in Marketing, we have Arjun Badura, Purnav Peranik, and Chris Shaw. Third place in Public Policy and Advocacy, Dewanee Benou. In Introduction to Event Planning, we have Doten Aberidge, Abhinav Rajesh, and Ryan David. And third place in Business Communication, Chloe Saradi.
Third place for Social Media Strategies, we have Priya Shaw. First place in Help Desk, we have Keisha Gandhi. And in first place for Consultality and Event Management, we have Sriraj Mahatra, Hasneet And for our NJ Education Programming Committee, we have Vikram Raganoff to recognize. As well as we have NJ Education Program Committee, as well as elected as the new Central Region Vice President for NJ FBLA, Lasneet Kabar.
And we won several chapter awards as well. So, we took first place in Whiskers and Wishes State Community Service Project, second place in Task Board of Progress Portfolio, gold seal, we are a gold seal of merit recipient, and we are the largest chapter membership in the central region, and we won the Chapter Website Award of Merit. I do want to take a moment to recognize Jen and Brian. They do an excellent job. FBLA is one of our largest and most successful clubs at MTHS, and they do a great job. So, thank you to Jen and Brian. At this time, I would like to quote up one of our Key Club advisors, Ms. Giovanna Quindes.
Good evening. So, Key Club is a volunteer organization. The students that are being awarded tonight have given countless hours of volunteer work in all aspects of school, outside of school, and in the community. The students that are here have been elected to state positions. Two of them are going to be lieutenant governors that are liaisons between key clubs throughout different schools in the states. So, our first student that I want to call up is Ishika Agawal, and she's our artistic liaison for number eight. And our second student I want to call up is Divya Das. She is our lieutenant governor for District One. And our third student is Kushi Trivedi. She will be the state editor for Key Club this year.
Ms. Quindes is also the advisor for our technology student association, who is recognizing a number of students tonight.
So, on our May 3rd competition, we took third place in Engineering Design. I want to call up Sarvesh Anand. Shrikanth Bodicharala. Akshara Karthik. Samita Madhali. Anusha Bhakash. And we also took first place in Virtual Reality Visualization. I want to call up Sean Demello, Anurag Kohla, and Saquon Sine.
Thank you, Ms. Quindes. To recognize our students' excellence in youth in government, I would like to invite our advisor for the Youth in Government Club, Ms. Laura Granite, to the podium.
Youth in Government is a student-run government for the state. They have one in each of the states throughout the country. Students write bills they wish were New Jersey state law. They have to write it in the proper format. They train and learn how to speak professionally in the proper parley-pro procedure in chambers. There is a student governor. There is a student cabinet for each of the cabinet positions. You have the Senate. You also have the Assembly. And the bill has to be voted out of committee when they're in committee sessions, and then has to follow the traditional path or have to pass both houses and be signed off by the governor. You can get vetoes, you can get conditional vetoes. We also have a lobbyist corps that are hired by companies to then lobby for the bills that they wish would become law. We have a court system, and they write legal briefs, and they debate cases that have gone to the New Jersey Supreme Court. Additionally, they can select bills that they don't think is according to the New Jersey State Constitution, and the bill author would have to defend themselves before those justices. We also have a crisis co-op committee, where we know that things come up at any given time. They're given problems, and they have to work with that as well. And we have the press, where they do report, both in print and in other media, with the activities throughout that. It's a quite intensive program. Monroe Township High School has one of the strongest delegations, and we usually do, and this year as well, take home quite a bit of honors. So, we have for the, from our Courts Division, the Outstanding Courts Brief, Avni Gambrala, Hanat Sagal, and Pritika Shupla. Please come on down. We have for the successful legislation that passed, Clara Cortenan, Sanvi Mehta, Sahithi Hikari, and Ashwin Sharma. The outstanding first-year delegate, first year that they have done this, is Dideepya Tadpani. We have our crisis co-op finalist who worked on one of the problems, is Thomas Murphy. They have a program that they run during the year, where the top people in the program from each state is selected to what is called the Council on National Affairs, and we had named to the Council of National Affairs, quite prestigious, Zain Jaber, Samantha Mosa, and Anyarana, and Philip Shigavani. We had several people who were officers at the state-level program. The Alice Paul Assembly Chairs for 2025 were Ariyan Mather and Samantha Mosa. This year, for the Lobby Corps President was Anyarana, and elected for next year to be the Lobby Corps President is Virithika Patranarthi. Monroe Township High School had the Governor for the State, Zain Jaber. Monroe Township High School had the governor for the state, Zain Jabir. We have for next year, the chief justice of the courts, Samya Devanilali, sorry. We had the editor-in-chief of the press corps, and that was Thirika Madare. And the delegation as a whole was awarded outstanding delegation. Thank you for all of the work that you did. These kids are incredible.
Thank you, Ms. Granite, for all your hard work as well. At this time, I would like to invite the advisor for the National English Honor Society, Ms. Sharon DiMarco, to introduce our scholarship winner.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight as the advisor of the National English Honor Society. NEHS, as it is known, is sponsored by Sigma Tau Delta, and it recognizes students who demonstrate not only excellence in English, but also in leadership, service, and character. As part of its mission, NEHS offers members a national scholarship opportunity. It's an essay contest based on a chosen novel. This year's novel was Clara and the Sun by Katsuo Ishiguro. It's a powerful and haunting tale of a future shaped by technology. In a world increasingly reluctant to obey their robotic companions and obsessed with genetic enhancement, this novel really questions whether machines can replace humans. Throughout the fall, NEHS members read and discussed this novel deeply. By January, all of our members submitted a carefully crafted literary analysis essay, along with a personal video reflecting on how literature and their experiences in NEHS have influenced their growth as students and also as individuals. A national panel of educators reviews these essays from hundreds of submissions across the whole country. They looked for compelling literary interpretation, quality writing, original insight, personal reflection, and they only selected the very best examples of these skills, and those who are also planning to go to a four-year university. So on behalf of MTHS, I'm so proud to recognize Param Getia, a member of the class of 2025. Param is planning on attending Rutgers University in the fall, where he plans to major in electrical and computer engineering. Congratulations, Param.
Thank you. I just, I don't, I didn't see Ms. Normick. I don't know if she's here. Is Ms. Normick here or Mr. Varellis? So it is my honor to recognize our representatives for the 2025 Teen Arts Festival. These are our state representatives. Avani Gambhala and Charvika Gop. Thank you to, to all of our students and all of our advisors. It is my pleasure to hand the mic over to our athletic director, Mr. Barandika.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to acknowledge our student athletes who did a fantastic job this year. The spring was equally as successful as our fall and winter. This year, we actually had our last athlete competed today, which is awesome. So there are some schools that were done maybe two and a half weeks ago. So we made it really far in states, both as teams, as individuals. We're very proud. Let's give them a big round of applause for that. This year, we also had 26 student athletes sign during national signing day events that we have throughout the year, for a total of 11 different sports being represented to play at all the Division One, Two, and Three. So congratulations to all those student athletes. And she got a little bit ahead of me there. So the fabulous student athlete that just walked across, her name is Iman Sedu. And she is one of our spring track athletes at the middle school. She was our GMC champion, first place in discus this year. Next up, we have our flag football team, coached by Coach Nick Isola and Brian Hines. We have our first-team All-BCC Red Division, Evangelina Francisco. Mia Marabudo. And Isabella Stigman. We also had one student athlete, second-team BCC Red Division, Jordan Sours Barnett. Next up, girls lacrosse, All-Division and All-Conference, Juliana Dowd. Juliana also represented Monroe Township High School at the GMC Scholar Banquet. Next we have Savannah Riker. Raya Salum. And Isabel Rizzo. All-Red Division, Avery Lipton. GMC Offensive Player of the Year, Raya Salum. And our head coach, Ms. Alexa Marshall, was the GMC Coach of the Year. Onto boys lacrosse. We had three players receive All-Red Division, Jake Ivanchuk, We had three student athletes receive All-Conference honors, Peyton Millian, and Terron Singh. Boys volleyball, All-Division and All-Conference, Joel Abraham. He was also recognized at the GMC Scholar Athlete Banquet this year as well. All-Red Division, Suveed Kolaru and Sree Santosh. Softball, All-Division and All-Conference, Monica Bukowicz and Brielle Zarski. And our head coach, Ms. Marissa Voetman, GMC Red Division Coach of the Year. Boys tennis, All-Division and All-Conference, Nathan Voodoo. He competed today in the second round of the individual tournament, fell to his opponent, but made it really, really far. So congratulations to him. And we have spring track. GMC Champion, 1600 meter and 3200 meter, Central Jersey Group Four 3200 meter sectional champion, and also competed and qualified for the Meet of Champions, Stephen Barbera. I'm going to go a little off-script here. We did have a couple of awards that came in a little late for postseason awards, so I do want to acknowledge those student athletes. Stephen also received All-Conference honors. We have Jimmy Giordano, All-Conference. We have Nishant Tama, All-Conference, and placed fourth at the Meet of Champions. And then we also have Ayo Sagu, All-Division, and placed seventh at the Meet of Champions. So let's give them a round of applause. All right. And last but certainly not least, we have our golf program, All-Division and We have All-Division, Shreyas Kuntamukala. And All-Conference, Tristan Mooneyz. We are extremely plowed of our MTHS golf program. This year, they were also GMC champions for the first time in school history. Krish Anand, Lane Belmont, Janaki Chirala, Brody Chong, Chase Gotchenor, Shreyas Kuntamukala, Tristan Mooneyz, and Joseph Peters. Again, congratulations to all of our sport programs this year. We're already preparing, getting ready for the fall, and we look forward to another great year next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all those who attended. It was an outstanding year, from academics to our arts programs, to our athletic programs. And this is an exciting time of year because we kind of bring it all together, and we wrap things up. We have a bunch of events coming up in the next couple of weeks, which we're very excited about. But that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all of our award recipients this evening. And the next item on our agenda is our committee reports. You can see on the agenda, it says the following committees recently met. Tuesday, June 3, was Curriculum, Co-Curricular Athletics and Pupil Personnel, Citizens Advisory Committee, Legislative Action and Community Engagement and Policy Committee, and on Wednesday, June 4, was Personnel, Finance and Shared Services, Buildings, Ground, Transportation and Security Committee. We did have a brief discussion last month about making it easier for our board members to access all of the committee reports. All of the committee reports are listed on the board agenda as attachments for you. The videos are also live streamed. So is there anybody that just has anything that they would like to highlight quickly from their committee reports? Ms. Bora?
I have one comment and then one request. The comment is on the LACE committee. I want to congratulate everybody on the committee for finally getting us a spot on Monroe News. It had been a wish list for a long time. A lot of you get this every quarter. There has been no news on our school district, you know, quarter after quarter. 7,000 students in school district is definitely part of Monroe News, and the LACE committee was able to collaborate with the editor. And I believe we made our first submission, and in the next Monroe News, we should see news. So I congratulate everybody on the committee for making that happen. The other comment that I have was on the Policy Committee discussion on honoring the students' policies specific to the NHS criteria. There has been a lot of chatter on this, and so my request is if Dr. Lehman could repeat what he said in the committee meeting, which I did here, but I'm sure a lot of people have not seen it. You are the guiding principle that the high school followed in coming up with their recommendation for the weighted average of 95 for the NHS qualification. Thank you.
Sure. So Dr. Higgins met with his team, and they analyzed the current class as if it were to simulate through some of the kind of thoughtful and thought-out criteria. And what they determined, and they heard the voices from the community about the importance of factoring in the weighted piece as part of the motivation for students to take some of those honors in AP level classes. So in consideration of that, they looked at 95 as the A. That is the 95 on a 100-point scale, that's our A. Anything lower than that is an A-, above that is an A+. So A is the benchmark. And then they set the criteria based off of using that as the weighted number and the weighted value. They did run the numbers for 93.75, and 92, I believe, was the other number they ran it for. I don't have the notes in front of me. I can pull them out as we, you know, go through the meeting. But he analyzed it, and it does reduce the number of students that are eligible to apply for NHS, but it also accomplishes the goal of raising the rigor, which was one of the goals and the focuses of doing this.
If I can repeat those numbers, there was 51% students qualifying at the current criteria in the current junior year class. If we were to make it 93 point something, it would be 36%, and then at the 95, 28% of the current class would qualify. And the goal was to land between 25 and 30% in terms of the qualifying students.
Yeah. And I would say there's not a, we're not looking for an X amount of students to be able to qualify. If the entire class qualifies with a 95, then that's awesome. You know, it's not about getting a number, but it's about raising the rigor and then seeing the impact of what that adjustment made, but also taking into consideration the weighted piece.
Ms. Rattner?
Yep. So I was going to highlight Monroe News. I appreciate Ms. Bora bringing that up. I do know Mr. Morada last week had shared that we had submitted a couple of articles for submission because we had a quick turnaround. I believe one was regarding the award for the music community. The other one was for the golf team's accomplishments. There might have been a third one. I don't remember off the top of my head. But thank you to him for getting those in so quickly once we got, once we heard back from the township. And thank you to the township for working with us on that. I also did just want to touch on Regulation 5440 from the Policy Committee. I had brought up some concerns at the meeting last week. I do want to thank Dr. Higgins, Dr. Lehman, you know, the entire administration because I know that this has been a long conversation, very extensive. But I also know there's a lot of passion in the community about this. And I just want to make sure if we're going to make these changes that we're making them, you know, for the benefit of the community. And so I know I had advocated strongly to continue utilizing the weighted GPI, so I do want to thank the administration for hearing that. My concern now sort of comes from that other side of it, to make sure that we aren't significantly reducing the ability for the students who maybe aren't taking a significant number of AP or honors classes. You know, specifically, perhaps some of those students who maybe, you know, are, you know, in more basic skills classes, whether they have, you know, IEP plans or things of that nature. Because by raising this to a 95 now, we're essentially requiring those students to get, you know, very high grades throughout their entire tenure in high school. And I think just, we want to make sure that we're trying to, you know, have each kid reach their maximum potential. So I know that there's, this is a first read. We still have time to, you know, discuss this either way. But I did just want to share my thoughts, and also perhaps for our Policy Committee meeting in July, or our next Policy Committee meeting, if we can possibly just see from that perspective how much the reduction of students would be, if there would be a large impact on that, I would appreciate that.
Sure. I can bring that back. But just to come full circle, we talked about the basis of the students taking classes in high school is some students will stretch for an AP or an honors class, but there are multiple levels of classes. So students performing in the appropriate level class, the threshold of 95 is if they're in the AP class, they've met the criteria to be in there. So the expectation is to operate at that level. If they're in a different level class, whether it's a dynamics or a standard track class, the tracking, quote-unquote, of the students places them in the courses that are the appropriate level. And then if they have modifications or accommodations, those are factored into the grade that exists. So we can certainly have a conversation, but that was the basis of, you know, the conversation at the last meeting without the weighting piece. So the weighting piece is taking into account the motivation to having that, you know, carried in there for the advanced level classes. So we wouldn't have a student choose not to take a course just to get in it in the National Honor Society criteria to take an easier course instead. This gives them that flexibility and the ability to do that. But the basis of the decision is grounded in the students are taking courses that are tracked and at the level at which they're operating. And that was the, that's been the kind of foundation. And that was the, that's been the kind of foundation of this since the inception of it.
Right, and I know we had started this just to, you know, make sure that our policy was following the current protocols at the high school for principals' lists, and, you know, I know that's sort of the more urgent need, and I, you know, I think that it's been a good discussion, but I just did want to share that. And then just really quickly, the other question I just wanted to ask is, I had the opportunity to watch the BGNT meeting, but I just wanted to know if, I don't know if you were planning to do this later on in the meeting, but the current situation at Applegarth School, if there's been any changes in the last week regarding that.
Yeah, so we're still, like, as I communicated in BGNT, we have a vetted-out, strong plan for the middle school as a Plan B, and we're still working with that other location through some of the variables. Mostly, it's on their end, making sure that the facility itself would meet the criteria that we would be required to meet to step into a building. We will take action, the longer they take, the less likely we are to use them, specifically considering the middle school has evolved into a very strong option for us with all the variables vetted out. So the communication plan for the community, specifically those incoming fourth and fifth grade families and students, is to get notification out to them before the end of the school year with kind of a status and a heads-up, and then we will communicate through the summer as things evolve. You know, the ultimate goal is that this part arrives, and we are actively working on that, and, you know, that is not something that is an unlikely scenario, there's a very good chance that it will come, so this is all for not, but we will be queued up and ready to roll if, you know, nothing changes.
Okay, and then just, if it does end up where these students need to attend the middle school, I know we had discussed the potential trailer removal, is that still something that we would be doing, or would we be holding off on this until?
So the trailers will remain in place until this is resolved.
Okay.
That is part of the solution for this.
Okay.
Yep, and then once everything is played out, then we can proceed with taking action as a board to then move forward with removing the trailers.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board on committee reports? Okay, then we're going to move on to the public forum for agenda items only. Any member of the public wishing to speak, you have four minutes to do so, please state your name and municipality for the record.
I think the minutes of the last meeting are in the agenda, and the first motion which our district is in the agenda. So, like to discuss about the superintendent's, you know. So, the members of the Board of Education, respected members of the Board of Education, we the constituent of the district express our grave concern and deep dissatisfaction regarding the dissent actions taken by the district board, including the administrative leave of districts to be treated without public explanation or due transparency in the last board meeting. The apparent decision to place superintendent on the paid administrative leave without state of cause, evidence of due process, raises serious questions regarding governance, accountability, and compliance with both state education policy and open meeting laws. The lack of transparency surrounding this action has posted widespread confusion, eroded public trust, and calls into question whether this board is acting within the bounds of its judiciary duties and ethical obligations. It is the board's legal and moral responsibility to provide clarity and justification for the decisions that materially affects the administration and welfare of our schools. The superintendent was actively pursuing fully kindergarten implementation, a critical initiative for the education, equality, and early childhood development. The apparent eventant or delay of this effort is unacceptable and constitutes a direct disservice to the families and children of our district. Dr. Chanley has devoted more than twenty years of service in our Monrotowns school district as a teacher, middle school principal, and last two years as a superintendent. She took over as a superintendent during tough times of cold crisis and has demonstrated good performances there. She makes sure children, from first, we as community are surprised. For, second thing, multiple middle school campuses within the district are tested with evaluated high levels ten times of the permitted levels, four to ten times. This is a health emergency. The prince of lead concentration, let alone high level, poses documented insurmountable threat to the cognitive and physical development of children. We need from the BOA report on medical impact on middle school students. National community, you know, honor society, the acceptance level is eighty-five. I understand that you are raising the bar from ninety to ninety-five. Why such a high bar at national level? It impacts on the admission of students to good college. Keep it to ninety, with weighted average score of eighty and honor student. Be fair to all students, even regular students. We hereby demand following actions to be taken without delay. A full and public explanation of superintendent administration leave, including timelines, rationale, and plan for leadership. Illegal public release of environmental impact to our middle school students. A detailed corrective action, third-party involvement resolving this issue. Restore ninety percent weighted scores standing for national honors. Please be advised that people of this district will not tolerate opaque governance, abduction of duty, or inaction in the face of the environment threats to our children. If transparency and accountability are
Thank you, your time is up.
... we will take legal action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Respected BOA members and fellow Monroe citizens, my name is Ketul Parik. Me and my family have been living in Monroe Township for over twenty years. Both my daughter and my son started their schooling in Monroe from kindergarten onwards. My daughter graduated from Monroe High School and will be in her final year of medical school in July. My son was diagnosed with brain cancer at the age of ten and passed away when he was thirteen. Dr. Chanley was the middle school principal for both my children. I would like to read a message from my family, my daughter, my wife, and myself. A cancer diagnosis comes with millions of questions, especially with a child. When our son was diagnosed with cancer, one of our questions was how his diagnosis treatment would impact his schooling and education. What we found when we went to his school, MTMS, was teamwork and a cohesive environment from every member of the staff to give us complete support, encouragement, and assurance that out of our million worries, this would not be one of them. This positive environment would not have been possible without a strong leader like Dr. Chanley shining by example. Much like a mother bird watching over her babies in a nest, Dr. Chanley has been, has always been a protector and advocate for children under her care. As a cancer patient, our son was self-conscious about his loss of his hair due to his treatment, especially around his friends and classmates. Dr. Chanley protected and advocated for our son by reminding fellow administrators to follow our son, son to wear his hat in the school building. Under Dr. Chanley's leadership, when our Thanksgiving holiday was clouded by the news that our son would be placed on hospice, the entire middle school came together to deliver us with food, gift cards, and later to bring us comfort during a challenging time. When our son passed away, Dr. Chanley allowed his friends and classmates to honor and salute his funeral procession outside of the middle school so that they could pay their final respect to their beloved friend. Subsequently, administrators, counselors, and nurses worked in tandem to ensure that emotional and psychological impacts on MTMS students were mitigated. It is clear that Dr. Chanley leads with compassion and strength that trickles down to every educator, staff, and child under her care. She truly believes in lifting up her educators and believing in each and every child's potentials as if they were her own. There is no person more dedicated to Monroe schools and the children that it serves than Dr. Chanley. Monroe and its children are immensely lucky to have had her thus far, and it is our sincere hope that she will be able to continue to lead this district with the same strength, protection, and positivity that she always has. My fellow citizens, our experience shows that Dr. Chanley will use her strength and even take extra steps to secure, protect, and comfort your child in her care. Thank you very much.
Michelle Scott, I think you all know who I am. I'm a member of the Jamesburg Board of Education, and I'm also a resident of Jamesburg, and I'm speaking to you tonight. As a resident of Jamesburg, I'm elated to see the working relationship that's been going on between our superintendent in Jamesburg, Dr. Gina Valani, and Dr. Chara Chanley, and their staff that's included our eighth-grade students in many of the events for them to meet and get to know one another prior to entering the high school and becoming fellow Falcons. This helping their transition to the high school become more fluid. I cannot recall any of our prior superintendents of either district collaborating on the scale for the best of our students. Just this month, our students joined the middle school students for their spring concert, and I was extremely happy to hear this. From my knowledge, Dr. Chanley has always put the students and the staff first, and I would like to see her continue to do so, and I ask that you reconsider the motion that was made last month to suspend her and reinstate her immediately. I'd also like to comment on this average of ninety-five, that why does Monroe think that they're any better? I myself was, I'm a National Honor Society member that was inducted in my junior year high school, and why does Monroe think that they have to have now a ninety-five average and ninety is unacceptable? I hope that you think about that and consider that and how that's going to affect the students. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak?
Edward Selby, Milltown, former colleague, or president of the league, little vacation. Good evening. I'm here to tell you of my interaction with Dr. Chanley. It's only my opinion, I'm not trying to convince you, but I think you're missing out on what she creates. First thing I learned from Dr. Chanley is family. Her family comes first. It's all about family with her. Whenever, when my wife had a stroke, she couldn't do enough. She called me every day, she would text me, her husband would text me. That's family, and that's what she brings to the buildings. She brings family, she looks at these kids, she's interacting with the kids constantly, interacting with staff. We all understand that there's negativity, we see it all the time. I've been a victim, and I've probably been the odd side of it. I blame no one for that. It happens, but we have to stop reacting to the negative. We can't change the past. We cannot go back and change the past. Have we learned anything, have anybody paid attention in history class, social studies, or whatever you call it today? That was probably my best subject, outside of phys ed. However, we can't change the past. We have to move on from the past. We have to stop being viral and attacking each other, and let the person that has shown great leadership. I look at Ms. Allen, who was elevated to business administrator, and under her guidance and under Dr. Chanley's leadership, the district's in a fight, I'm going to say the word wrong, physical, physical well-being. That's leadership, that's recognizing talents and not micromanaging. Dr. Chanley doesn't micromanage. She allows you to do your job and elevate it to where you need it to be. I can't convince you to do anything. I can just express to you what I learned from Dr. Chanley, and that's allow your people to do their jobs. Do not micromanage. Do not miss out on the talents of Dr. Chanley and how she interacts with these children, how she dresses for Halloween. I've worked through some good superintendents, as Ms. Fabiano can attest to, probably one of the best I've ever seen. So I met Dr. Chanley, she's gaining there, but anyway, give her a chance. Go back, think about what you're doing, you're doing it to the district. Do not try to live in the past. Move forward. I don't know what happened before I got here, I just know what happened while I was here. The only thing I can say is, thank you, Dr. Chanley, for bringing me Monroe, and to you, good luck.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Betty Sabrito, Monroe Township. I am the leader of CPAG, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Group, which is a state-mandated group, and I'm here to speak in benefit of reinstating Dr. Chanley. I've long advocated, for over a decade, for our special education programs and students. Currently, a fifth of our students fall under special education, over sixty-five percent of our state funding is special education, and over eighty-four percent of our federal funding is special education, so it's an important part of this district. We've advocated for a long time because we couldn't get anything done because of the lack of consistency. You are all very well aware of how we've had superintendents in and out. Working with Dr. Chanley and her team, under her leadership, we have finally seen improvements that we have advocated for for a decade, and that were very needed in special education for our students, for our staff, and for our community. Since Dr. Chanley stepped into the role, the following has been accomplished, and I say accomplished because there are very good things that are happening for our students. We've seen improvements to our special education reading programs, there were no reading programs for special education students until now. Opening of self-contained programs at all of our schools so that our students do not have to be bused from one end of town to the other, and they can attend their home schools alongside their siblings and their peers. Support of additional registered behavior technicians in self-contained special program classrooms, that is super important so that we're also supporting our teachers. The support of better teacher empower trainings for special education, that was lacking in this district. Bringing on the second supervisor of special education, which in our district this size was more than needed. The integration of our summer enrichment into our extended school year. Creation of a special education chain of command, which was also lacking in this district. The opening of a sensory room at the middle school to help support some of our students. The creation of self-contained programs allowing students the opportunity in the high school building that offers vocational and pre-vocational experiences and an environment designed to help them succeed in the future, that was lacking for a lot of our students. Complete inclusion in programs across all schools with push-in for all students so that they are allowed to be educated alongside their peers, and proper training of teachers so that they're able to properly modify these lessons and to really integrate these students into the general education classrooms. These are just some examples, and they're minors, but what's important here are that there are areas that we've been asking for improvement for over a decade that hadn't happened until now. We are, by this, we are enabling special education students to have equity and granting them the same opportunities as their general education peers. A disruption to this work inconsistency and the momentum would be detrimental to our programs and life-altering for a lot of our students. I don't think you guys recognize that enough. We are only able to achieve these long-advocated changes thanks to the consistency that Dr. Chanley spread across the staff. We have been working with her and with special education supervisors to improve our programs. We are urging you to please consider in your vote and also into reinstating her, because it's really important that this continuum, for this continuum, so that our educational programs for special education are helpful for our students. You know, I think what Mr. Selby just spoke about, if we could just leave the past in the past, everybody on all sides, there shouldn't be any side except for the side of our students and our staff, and unfortunately, I think this is all becoming very personal. And please put your personal agendas aside, think about what this gentleman just spoke about with his family, what they went through, those are real-life problems, not the nonsense that we've allowed to go on in this Board of Education for a decade. So please consider this and the well-being of this district. I don't care what side you're on, leave your stuff at the table, that's been one of my biggest things, that, you know, just advocate for what's right for our students, for our staff. Please think about your votes.
Katie Belka, Monroe Township, co-CPAG leader with
Co-CPAG leader with Mrs. Sabrito and former Board of Education member. I was not Mrs. Chanley's biggest fan when she first applied for the job here as the superintendent of Monroe Township. Mrs. Thora and I share that sentiment. However, when she was the acting superintendent in this district, she was able to be a mover and a shaker and get things done in this district that has taken years to get done because of the revolving door that was happening with these, the superintendents that came through this district. For personal reasons, personal vendettas, things that were, should not be at that table when you're making decisions for this district. I implore all of you who voted to put Mrs. Chanley on suspension, or I'm not really quite sure exactly what you did with her, put her on leave with pay, but I implore you to rethink your decision on that and to revert that and go back and make sure that she continues to lead this district, at least for the duration of the contract that she has that is binding with this district, which we will wind up paying out anyway if we don't keep her in her job. I, when she came up for the full position as the superintendent, and I will quote, I had said I would never vote yes for her for the full job, and she changed my mind, and it was because of the way she worked, the things that she did, and I was able to see that Dr. Chanley was caring about the staff, the students, and what education we provide here in this district of Monroe. And I'm very proud of the three years I spent as a Board of Education member and being aside her and supporting her in the decisions that she made. I did not agree with all of them. I argued with her on many occasions, and I, and she and I came to many agreements and compromises, which is what you do when you're sitting there in the position that you all have. And if you feel like I'm scolding you, I am, because this is unacceptable behavior, and you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
Eric Marazin, Monroe Township. I own a small business, but I want to just clarify for a second. My business is not in Monroe. It's not affiliated with the township or its schools, and I'm here for one reason and one reason only, and that's for Connor Marazin, who's my son, who's eight, he goes to Mill Lake, and my daughter, Cadence Marazin, who is also eight and goes to Mill Lake. And this is why I'm here. This is why I'm involved right now, and not for just them, but for all the kids in this district, and I hope we can all agree that they deserve nothing less but the best leadership in the district. That said, the way that this board has conducted business over the last few months has caused a lot of concern in our community, as we have seen already tonight, and I'm sure we're going to go on and see it a lot more. As someone with a degree in educational leadership, I know that decisions made without warning or explanation can cause anxiety and fear among staff, which can lead to long-term negative consequences for our students and community. I have a few questions. I hope you answer them, and perhaps I'm missing something. I hope tonight's discussion can provide clarity for all. I understand that you cannot speak to any personnel matters, but please note that my questions primarily pertain to district protocol and policies and not to confidential information, which I understand cannot be discussed. Ms. Fabiano, I understand these questions are for you, but if you are unable to answer the legal ones, I'd appreciate it if you defer to the board's attorney. First question. When the motion was made to put the superintendent on paid administrative leave, it was stated that it was based on, quote, "because of what we heard here tonight," end quote. Was this concerning a public or closed session discussion? If discussed in public, can you disclose what was said that led to this action?
That wasn't my statement, so I can't clarify.
All right. Number two, I noticed Robert's rules of order were not followed during that motion, as there was no discussion or restating of the question before the vote. Why was this process not observed, and is the district legally required to follow it?
Do you want to ask all of your questions first, or do you want to let the time run?
I can ask all of them. What is the legal process for placing an employee on paid administrative leave in our district? If there is one, can you share the policy number?
So you want to keep asking your questions?
I'm just making sure if you need to write them down. Number, this is my last one. It's only four questions, very easy. What are the legal reasons an administrator can be placed on administrative leave? Are there specific circumstances that immediately warrant this action? Those are my questions. There's 59 seconds left, but I think I have a little more time since I was waiting.
Mr. Marazin, I know that you initiated litigation against the district. There's currently pending litigation against the district related to these issues, so I'm not going to be discussing them with you tonight. The board's legal counsel in those litigated matters will be answering a lot of the questions that you've posed, and certainly to the extent that you have additional questions, I'm sure they would answer them as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So when we get our extension, I guess, back from the pro se form of appeal, that we'll get some answers?
I'm not sure what you're talking about, because I wasn't involved in that litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Consiglio, and I'm a former teacher at the middle school, and I worked with Dr. Chanley for 16 years. I'm reading a message on behalf of myself and other former colleagues. I've had the privilege of working alongside Dr. Shari Chanley for many years and can personally attest to the supportive, inclusive, and collaborative environment she has fostered. As a leader, her door has always been open, welcoming new ideas, programs, and events that benefit our students. With over two decades of experience in this district, Dr. Chanley brings a rare depth of institutional knowledge that few can match. Her professional journey from vice principal to principal, acting superintendent, and eventually superintendent reflects not only her dedication, but her consistent support for educators, families, and most importantly, our students. She led our district through one of the most challenging times in recent history, the pandemic, carefully balancing the safety of students and staff while ensuring educational community. Dr. Chanley's longstanding service has given her a unique perspective on the evolving needs of our community. She has championed diversity and inclusion in our schools, evidenced by meaningful changes such as updates to the district calendar, the introduction of sports like cricket, and community-centered events like those organized with the Ong Foundation. She leads with integrity, empathy, and a steadfast commitment to fairness. Dr. Chanley has always treated district employees equitably, fostering a culture of respect and professionalism. What is happening now has created a climate of doubt, confusion, and concern. At the very least, Dr. Chanley deserves a fair and transparent process. Likewise, our community deserves honesty and clarity in understanding all aspects of the situation. I sincerely hope and trust that our elected officials will uphold due process and maintain the values of transparency, equity, and accountability that this district stands for. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. Chrissy Skirby, Monroe, Torreon Preakness Drive. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern over the proposed changes to the National Honor Society eligibility requirements, specifically the increase in the academic threshold from 90 weighted GPA to a 95 weighted GPA. Right now, 51% of our current junior class qualifies to apply for NHS under the existing criteria. That's a meaningful and healthy percentage, one that encourages a broad group of students to strive for excellence in academics, service, leadership, and character. However, if this change is adopted, the number of qualified students will plummet to about 28% of the class. That is a drastic drop, almost half. This is not a minor adjustment. It represents, it represents a fundamental shift in how we define achievement and opportunity in our school district. This change does not affect individual students. It impacts our entire community. Each NHS member is required to complete at least 40 hours of community service. When fewer students are eligible, we lose hundreds, potentially thousands, of hours of service that benefit our local organizations, our neighborhoods, and our schools. Reducing the pool of eligible students so drastically will also demoralize many hardworking students who, while perhaps not at a 95 GPA, are still deeply committed to service, leadership, and academic growth. NHS should inspire excellence, not discourage effort. Raising the bar so high sends the message that only perfection is worthy of recognition. That's not the spirit of education. That is not the spirit of the National Honor Society. I urge you to consider a more balanced approach, one that maintains high standards while continuing to foster inclusion, community involvement, and student growth. Now, speaking tonight as a parent and as a former Board of Education president in Monroe Township, I am respectfully requesting that Dr. Shari Chanley be reinstated as the superintendent of schools. On May 5th, this board voted to place Dr. Chanley on administrative leave without providing any explanation to the public. As a parent, I find this deeply troubling. As a former board president, I find it unethical and unlawful and something that has the potential to cost the district a lot of taxpayer money spent on legal bills rather than education. More than a month has passed, and there is still no evidence or rationale shared with the families who entrust you to the education and well-being of our children. You often talk about the importance of communication and transparency, but yet, for more than a month, there has been zero. You have left parents, staff members, teachers, and the entire Monroe community wondering why you took this action and wondering who is next on your hit list, as you have fired and tried to fire multiple principals, you fired our security director, and you put the superintendent on leave, all without just cause. Dr. Chanley has been a steady and student-centered leader. Under her leadership, we have seen meaningful progress, accountability across the district, and a genuine focus on academic excellence. Yet, this decision to suspend her without explanation feels like a decision made to settle a score or even to, or to get even with me for a vendetta that the board president's husband has had against me since February 2022. Your decision at 1:30 in the morning on May 6th was not rooted in what is best for kids or what is best for the educational system here in Monroe Township. The abuse of power shown by this board is only going to hurt our community. We should be focusing on the real issues that we are facing. Conversations this month should have been about how to handle Applegarth School possibly not opening in September. Putting fourth and fifth graders in the trailer in this building is unacceptable. I don't know how you plan on having lunch, specials, busing, all here for fourth and fifth graders, but the conversation isn't happening about that. It's about why the superintendent is put on leave.
Ms. Skirby, your time is up.
I ask this board to do the right thing and to reinstate Dr. Chanley.
Good evening. Christina Zawaki, Monroe Township. I'm actually reading a letter on behalf of Margaret and Ray Nesby, who are in a meeting right now. I know that you all know them. They do a lot for the township, so they gave it to me to speak for them. Good evening, members of the board. Our names are Margaret and Raymond Nesby, and we've had the honor of working in this district for a combined total of 25 years. We stand here tonight not just as an employee, but as people who deeply care about the well-being of our students, the health of our school community, and the integrity of our leadership. I want to speak from the heart about Superintendent Chanley, who has been placed on administrative leave without explanation. This has shaken many of us, not just because we care about her as a person, but because we've seen firsthand the difference she has made in this district. In a profession where we often feel overlooked, Superintendent Chanley has always made us feel seen. She didn't just lead from behind a desk. She walked through our halls, stepped into our classrooms, and took time to speak with those of us who often go unnoticed. She asked questions. She listened, and perhaps most importantly, she acted with heart, with fairness, and with a genuine belief in the potential of every child and every staff member in this district. We've seen her comfort students in moments of crisis. We've watched her advocate for programs that help our most vulnerable children. We've witnessed her steady presence during uncertain times, and in those moments, she gave many of us the strength to keep going. That's not just leadership. That is humanity. So to see her suddenly removed with no explanation or communication feels like a blow to everything we believe as a school family. It has left us confused, hurt, and frankly, afraid. Because if someone like Superintendent Chanley can be cast aside without clarity or cause, what does that say to the rest of us, like Ray and I? Who pour our hearts into this work every single day? We are not asking for secrets to be revealed. We understand that some matters require discretion, but silence breeds fear, and in a school system, fear can be just as damaging as failure. We need to know that the values we teach our children, honesty, fairness, respect, are being honored at every level, especially at the top. The district has come a long way under Superintendent Chanley's leadership. We've built relationships. We've rebuilt trust. We've started to believe in what's possible. Please don't let that progress unravel by removing our leader, Dr. Chanley. We ask you to consider the message being sent not just to Superintendent Chanley, but to all of us who serve this district with love and commitment. If there is a path forward rooted in fairness and compassion, I urge you to take it because our students, staff, and community depend on it. Thank you for your time and for listening with both your minds and your hearts. Margaret and Ray Nesby. Thank you.
Good evening. Rochny Shaw, Monroe Township. I have two points, so I'm going to make them quickly. The first is around National Honor Society. I do believe increasing the criteria from 90 to 95 is a mistake. Admission into NHS is a checkbox for most mid-tier colleges, all the way up to the top 20 national colleges, and per national policies, students must have a minimum cumulative GPA of 85. Monroe Township has already made it higher by making it 90, and so I do feel like we are punishing our students for doing well academically. Dr. Liam, and you mentioned raising the rigor and seeing the impact. I'm curious what impact. I just see less students getting in, so I am curious about that. I do feel like we're putting our children at a disadvantage by making it more difficult to get in, and I'm just not seeing the benefits. I did want to communicate that before you go on. And my next statement. I come before you tonight not only as a concerned parent, but also as an invested member of this community who cares deeply about the future of our school district. The recent decisions made by this board have raised serious concerns about the direction we are moving forward and the motivations behind these decisions. From my perspective and the perspective of many others in our community, these actions appear to be, to have been taken without careful thought, deliberation, and long-term planning that such impactful decisions require. When decisions are made in haste or appear arbitrary, they risk undermining the trust of the very people you serve, parents, students, educators, and taxpayers alike. The direction in which our district moves today will shape the opportunities and outcomes of our children for years to come. The responsibility demands the utmost care, transparency, and reflection. In recent months, the board's faced significant decisions regarding the contracts of two highly respected and well-loved administrators. Initially, there was discretion, deliberation not to renew their contract. Fortunately, the board ultimately chose to do the right thing, first in March by voting to renew Mrs. Garcia's contract, and again last month by reversing course and renewing Dr. Chata's contract. I want to take a moment to genuinely commend the board for these decisions. It is never easy to reconsider a stance or a change in direction, but in doing so, you demonstrated open-mindedness, humility, and a willingness to truly listen to the voices of the community. That kind of leadership deserves recognition. Tonight, I respectfully implore you to approach your decision-making with the same open-mindedness you demonstrated in recent months, especially as it pertains to the decision to put Dr. Chanley on administrative leave. This decision, as many of us are aware, was made at approximately 2:00 AM during the very end of last month's board meeting. I think we can all agree, based on our life experiences, both as teenagers and adults, that our clearest thinking and wisest choices rarely occur in the early hours of the morning. But in all seriousness, I urge the board to not only reflect the impact of your decision, but to carefully examine the process by which it was made. Was a thorough investigation conducted? Were clear reasons provided to Dr. Chanley? If the answer to either of these questions are no, then I believe each and every one of you must pause and deeply reflect on the justification behind your vote, as over a month has passed since the decision has been made. Tonight, you have the opportunity to course correct, to bring stability and focus back to the district at a time where we are preparing for a critical milestone, including the opening of Applegarth School in the fall and the launch of Full Day Kindergarten. So I respectfully ask you to set aside personal differences. So I respectfully ask you to set aside personal differences, set aside politics, and reinstate Dr. Chanley, a leader who has moved this district forward by her inspiring passion and always putting the kids first. That, more than anything, should speak volumes to this board and to this community. I urge this board to slow down, listen more intently to community voices, and recommit to the process that prioritizes thoughtful governance over rushed judgments and action. We owe it to our community, and most importantly, our children, to ensure that every decision, especially one of this magnitude, is made with full clarity, integrity, and due process. Our children deserve nothing less. I urge you to please reconsider and reinstate Dr. Chanley. Thank you very much.
Pat Smith, resident Monroe Township for over forty-two. Educator from Monroe Township Middle School. The privilege of working closely with Dr. Chanley during her time as principal. Our shared love of literature and commitment to providing students with a high-quality education created a strong professional bond, built respect and dedication to student success. Personally, I'm especially grateful to Dr. Chanley for seeing potential in me. She hired me as an assistant principal, offering her full support and mentorship every step of the way. Her belief in me and my career engaged me in confidence to grow as a leader. I offer my full support to Dr. Chanley as superintendent of schools. Dr. Chanley is a leader of exceptional integrity, compassion, and dedication. She is generous with her time, consistently making herself available to listen, support, and guide those around her. Whether working with staff, students, or families, her encouragement is genuine and unwavering. What sets Dr. Chanley apart is her deep and abiding care for her students. She is committed to ensuring that every student thrives, both academically and emotionally. She understands that true learning happens when students feel safe, supported, and valued, and she works tirelessly to create that environment. Dr. Chanley is also a person of principle and passion. She leads with a sense of purpose and a steadfast commitment to doing what is right, even what is not easy. Her vision, integrity, and humanity make her an outstanding choice to lead our schools forward. Thank you for allowing me.
Jim Higgins, Principal of Monroe Township Middle School, speaking solely for myself. I will not comment on the situation. I simply want to thank—I'm gonna turn around and look at her—thank Dr. Chanley for promoting an integration of the MTMS eighth grade and the eighth graders from Jamesburg over the past few years, whether it's joining us on an eighth-grade field trip, participating in our annual health fair, or joining our band for screen concerts. Seeing the Jamesburg and middle school eighth graders is always wonderful. I thank you. I thank you for always being available to our students and coming to show your support, no matter what our event is. I thank you for being available to me twenty-four-seven, because our job is not a set-hour job. Our job is twenty-four-seven. I have called her eleven o'clock at night, eleven-thirty at night, six o'clock in the morning. She will pick up the phone to go over the situation. And lastly, I thank you for prioritizing security cameras for the middle school. For twelve years after we moved in, we had no security cameras with up to eighteen-hundred students in a building this large. No matter what the financial situation is, she helped me prioritize them. So I thank you, and the cameras are doing wonderful.
Thank you for this opportunity to talk and share our input on this evening on behalf of our direct supervisor and great colleague, Dr. Shari Chanley. As a building principal, I'm extremely proud to work in this Monroe Township and to support our district's vision. I'm also extremely grateful for this opportunity to continue my professional work here in Monroe, serving our supportive and dedicated Board of Education. It is my pleasure and professional joy to continue to serve as an education leader and to do what is best for children and for our learning. As a leader, I am encouraged to always use my voice, and this is one of those times. As you know, in the most recent board meetings in April and May, our communities from both Woodland and Mill Lake came to support our work as principals. It is now my opportunity to do the same, to show my support for my mentor and colleague, Dr. Shari Chanley. I want to start with a clear expression of gratitude and continued support for our shared work and efforts as a strong Monroe community. One of my favorite leadership quotes comes from Mr. Simon Sinek, an American inspirational leader and author. Sinek said, "A leader's job is not to do the work for others. It is to help others figure out how to do it themselves, to get things done, and to succeed beyond what they thought was possible." Dr. Shari Chanley embodies this quote, both as a mentor and supervisor, always supporting and paving the way for the success of wonderful Woodland School and all our fine-performing schools in this district. In each of my three years as the principal of Woodland, we've met our school goals with scores that were highly effective. We've established a strong culture of collaboration, shared learning, shared responsibility for the success of our students. We've embedded the avid advancement via individual determination philosophy into our school culture, and Dr. Chanley has been integral to those successes I just shared. She has been supportive in my leadership, my principalship, and all that I have done in this district. Finally, Dr. Chanley has strengthened the vertical articulation between my building and my sister's school, Mill Lake. And for this reason, up next to speak is my very good colleague and friend in this work, Ms. Pamela Garcia, who isn't a doctor, but could be.
I'm actually really nervous I'm gonna start by saying that. And I am, but I know there's a lot of educators that are here, and so I'm gonna speak to you, and I'm gonna speak to everybody, honestly. In March, I was honored to have the support of my Mill Lake community. Tonight, it's my turn to give that support back. I have been truly fortunate to be mentored by Dr. Chanley, a remarkable leader, whose insight, compassion, and commitment to excellence have shaped my growth and our school's success. I began my administrative career many years ago, actually right here in Monroe Township, with many of you, serving as a supervisor and working alongside many of the same dedicated colleagues who I continue to support and work with today. I share this because it's important to me that you understand that my deep connection to this district, to this school, to coming back to this community is more than just being a Mill Lake principal, which I've told you before has been one of the best experiences of my life, and I was very happy to get to return. During the March board meeting, the Mill Lake community came together with less than two days' notice to highlight the many successes we've experienced. Those achievements are not mine alone. Of course, they're all of the children and the teachers, which I constantly want to highlight because I'm nothing without them. Those achievements are not mine alone. They are the direct reflection of Dr. Chanley's leadership and the belief in the possibility and the possibilities when schools are supported and inspired from the top down. Educators know what that looks like. When you are supported from the top down, they're not standing on a pedestal or not being in your buildings. They're actually working hand-in-hand with you. Over the past three years, Dr. Chanley has played an active and integral role in both the daily operations and the long-term successes of our school. She is not a distant figure. She is present. She's visible, and she's engaged. Whether attending our annual Night of Reading for three years in a row—that I've seen her, and I'm sure it was continuous before that—our Veterans Day celebration, our beloved Halloween parade dressing up, she shows up, not just as the superintendent—sometimes it's Snow White—but someone who truly values and celebrates with the school community, and that is meaningful. Her presence at these events sends a very powerful message to the students, to the staff, and to the families, that Mill Lake matters. Our children matter. Your children matter. Please know that she brings that same level of dedication and guidance, not just to my school, not just to Woodland School, but to all the schools. Dr. Chanley's support goes beyond celebration. When a beloved first-grade teacher who was honored here tonight felt ill, she stepped in without hesitation. She assured parents and worked with me and came to my school and spoke to those that were affected to ensure that they were supported, that they knew that the district was behind them, not just myself, not just my VP, but actually the district. She was the representative. That doesn't often happen. Dr. Chanley empowers me to be fully present in my school—oh, my goodness—in my school to make thoughtful, courageous decisions and to continuously grow as a leader. Under her leadership, we have cultivated an environment at Mill Lake that is joyful, inclusive, and driven by growth mindset and high expectations. I'm almost done, I promise. I am proud of what we've built, and I'm deeply grateful for the guidance and heart that Dr. Chanley continues to pour into our schools and into our district. And I'm asking you to allow her to continue.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Monroe. I want to apologize because I'm losing my voice, but I just have a few things I'd like to say. I'm asking the board to reinstate Dr. Shari Chanley as superintendent. I recently retired after twenty-five years with the district, and I spent the last ten years at the middle school, where I worked for Shari for much of that time. As her secretary, I saw she is kind, honest, intelligent, well-informed, ethical, and inspiring. She was an excellent principal, and she has done an exemplary job as superintendent, doing more during her tenure than the revolving door of superintendents before her. Most importantly, she deeply cares about children, and students have always been her top priority. This board should put aside their grievances and work together to do what is best for our students. Stop wasting time, effort, and money on personal vendettas and move on. Monroe children deserve better. Please bring Dr. Chanley back so she can continue doing what is best for our kids.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow community members. My name is Abir Jaber. I live on Sixth Cedar Brook Road, and I'm a parent of two Monroe Township students in middle school and high school, both that were recognized today, so thank you for that. And one of whom—mom brag moment—is the first-ever New Jersey-elected student governor to be chosen from Monroe. That's saying in the back over there. I'm here tonight, though, to express my support for Dr. Chanley and to call for her reinstatement as superintendent, given that we have not been provided with clear evidence in support of the decision for the suspension. Let me begin with the simple truth. Putting a superintendent on administrative leave without due process does not serve our students, our educators, or our taxpayers. While Dr. Chanley remains at home, her full salary continues, yet the district operates without the benefit of her leadership. That is not sustainable or responsible outcome. I can only speak from my direct experience, but it's an experience shared by many in our large Monroe Muslim community, which represents a large number of community members here and one that is growing as well. Today, with others, including my partner, Samaya Assamra, who some of you have met in the past, we've worked closely with Dr. Chanley and the entire administrative team, I would say, and members of the Board of Education on a number of issues. And I can say without hesitation, Dr. Chanley has listened, she has collaborated, and she has taken action. In 2022, when we petitioned for our Muslim holiday, the holiday of Eid, to be recognized like other holidays in the district, as an official school holiday, it was Dr. Chanley who recommended that it be added to the calendar. Just this year, when we raised concerns about prom falling on our Eid holiday again, Dr. Chanley again responded, and thanks to her leadership and the board's approval, our Muslim holidays will be recognized in future years, including next year on the calendar officially. When concerns arose following the Patriots' Day lessons and the student experience with bullying and harassment during that time, Dr. Chanley didn't brush them aside. Instead, she invited us in to speak directly with district supervisors about ways to address and prevent Islamophobia in our schools. And when we organized events such as the Muslim Heritage Month proclamation and the lighting ceremony of the crescent and star during Ramadan, Dr. Chanley, and many of you also, didn't just know you all showed up. And she has supported us through and through and has celebrated with us through all of these occasions. As a member of the New Jersey Muslim Holiday Coalition, I can tell you that this kind of partnership between school leaders and diverse communities is still a challenge, even in a state as diverse as New Jersey. Many districts across New Jersey are still fighting for the kind of recognition and inclusion that we've achieved here in Monroe in such a short time, and that's in large part due to the leadership of Dr. Chanley. She has helped make our schools a safer, more welcoming space for all children, something every parent, every student, and every educator should expect from their superintendent. I mentioned my daughter in the beginning, not just to highlight her accomplishment as hers alone, but one that's a result of the support and confidence she has in being herself and growing into the future leader she will be as a result of her positive middle school and high school experiences during Dr. Chanley's tenure. That's why I respectfully urge this board to do what is right, not just for Dr. Chanley, but for our students, our educators, and our entire Monroe community, to reinstate her and give her the fairness and due process she deserves, and let's move forward together. Thank you.
Adam Elias, Monroe Township, Ninety-three Old Church Road. I appeared before this board in the past as a father of three young children here in Monroe, as an aspiring and failed politician. I appeared tonight, though, as a proud and humble-to-be legal counsel for Dr. Shari Chanley. I'll turn the clock back for a moment to April seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. Quote, "Dr. Chanley has done an incredible job this school year to push the Monroe Township School District to the next level. Her dedication as superintendent is unwavering. Under Dr. Chanley, the Monroe School District is a safe, caring, and healthy school environment. Dr. Chanley has been a strong advocate for community engagement, equity, and family engagement." That was April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. That's quoted directly from her evaluation. I have to ask, what the hell happened? What's changed in a year? It took me a while. I sat in my office for a while trying to piece things together. I had a lot of information, an overwhelming amount of information, thanks to my client who just kept just hammering me away with documents and with little snippets of information. I'm trying to piece it all together. All I could figure out was that two weeks later, on May first, two thousand twenty-four, Chrissy Kirby ended her wonderful tenure as board president and board member, and the board got a new president. And on that same day, the board president rescinded medical leave that was granted to the superintendent. And that was the start of a fact pattern, a fact pattern that leads us to where we are You know, we talk about transparency. This board, if nothing, is transparent about its game of retaliation. That is the name of the game for the Monroe Township school. We read about a lot of these other actions that happen to other superintendents across the state, and usually it's one incident. It can be traced to one incident. There is an overwhelming pattern of retaliatory action tracing back to May first, two thousand twenty-four. And it's not always Dr. Chanley that's the victim. There is collateral damage along the way, most recently Dr. Chata. And I too join everyone else in thanking the board for doing some self-reflection and reversing that decision. You know, real politicians like to flex when they take on collateral damage. they take on collateral damage. The most ruthless of them all will spill blood and they'll let it dry, you know, double down on it. They know there may be consequences and they know there's going to be collateral damage, unintended consequences maybe, but they make peace with it because they feel that the action that they're going to take outweighs the harms of the collateral damage. But the collateral damage here is our kids. It's our children, my kids, everyone else's kids. You know, the prevailing advice that my client receives is to shut up, sit back, grab a cocktail, and get paid to do nothing. She has a contract for three more years. Enjoy the leave. Reset your mind. She can't sleep. She wants to go back to work. She actually wants to come back to work here. You would argue that's a sociopath to want to come back to work here after the abuse she's taken, hundreds of thousands of use and abuse. But she's earned that right to want to come back here. Assistant principal, acting principal, principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent for 22 years. This, right here, is malice. This is irreparable harm. This is actionable, and each and every one of you are liable for that. On a personal note, I have one rule in my practice. I don't sue the police and I don't sue my school district. I'm not bluffing. This is ready to be filed tomorrow. I don't want to file it. Please don't make me do it. On a more personal note, on May 5, 2025, I went to bed that night as a proud resident of Monroe. I really did. And I woke up the next morning outraged, mortified. Please don't make me go to sleep and do that again.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum and move on to our next agenda item, which is our assistant superintendent's report.
Okay, so tonight I'm going to combine the assistant superintendent's report and the superintendent's report. The assistant superintendent's report is typically highlighting academic and athletic achievements and kind of bragging about our students and our staff. And I think we had a nice display of that this, this evening already, recognizing our retirees and finishing up our acknowledgements for our students. So I'm going to move right into our acting superintendent's report. So it's recommended for, under personnel items, personnel 10-member vote, items A through B, C, that the board approve the acting superintendent's recommendations.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. Bora, correct?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recused due to conflict on R33 and AH3 for Mr. Ratner.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under the personnel nine-member vote, it's recommended that the board approve personnel items BD through DF.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. DePaine?
Yes, oh, Ms. Bora. Whatever.
Any questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Board Action 10-member vote, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action items A through AP.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. Ratner. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
Yep. I do just have a quick question on letter AH. The arbiter registration, it's an online registration platform. Is that something that goes along with GoFan? Is it something entirely different?
The two programs are together. It's, it's the same parent company and it's something that the athletic tournament uses.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, one second. Where are we?
Board Action 10-member.
Sorry. Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
So yes to all. I have to recuse on number 13. Letter B, any items related to the learning tree? And AH, items for the learning tree. It's number one, AH, number one. Recuse. Yes to the rest. I'm on the wrong one? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, never mind. Let's do that again. So yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Bora?
No on item E and yes on everything else.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
No to E, yes to everything else.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I need to abstain on letter A for Mr. Snyder and letter G for Dr. Lehman, and then I'm going to vote no on letter E.
E, okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
No on E and J.
E and J. Okay. Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, okay, motion passes.
We could, Ms. Allen, to move on?
Yes. Sorry, next item, next.
Yep. It's recommended that the board approve Board Action items AQ through BC under the nine-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. DePaine. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes to all. I'm going to abstain on AX.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes to all, and I need to abstain on letter AQ for Ms. Frances.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our business administrator's report.
It is recommended that Board Action items A through AI be approved by consent roll call under a 10-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Bora. Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. Ms. Allen, would you be able to tell me if A1 is the lawyer we use for the pro se petition?
It is.
It is? All right. I just have a comment there that this was my first time seeing a lawyer represent the board because I went there. And God, he couldn't even say the name of our superintendent correct. He kept saying Dr. Charney. So I have to say that there's got to be some better, like, we've got to have some sort of quality control on who's representing us. Like, it, I honestly felt, if this is the person representing me, this time I, you know, he's probably doing, that's the quality every time. How are we being represented?
Yeah, so with that, the, the school district is insured by New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. And as part of their standard policy, which I haven't looked at the policy that's applicable to this specific district, but knowing New Jersey Schools Insurance Group policies as I do, there is an absolute right of the insurance carrier to pick and assign the insurance attorney to the school district.
And we cannot give any feedback, Mr. Weiss?
We can absolutely give feedback.
Because some of the arguments he made wasn't representative of this board at all. I don't think any one of us think ourself as political. And he made it sound like this is political.
I can certainly make the concern known to the insurance carrier.
Thank you. That was my comment. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
So I'm going to say yes to all, but I'm going to recuse on number 13. Items related to the learning tree on the bill list. And to do AH, related to the learning tree, which is number one.
Okay. Ms. Bora?
No to A1 and yes to all others.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes to all, but I have to abstain in the bill list where, if it does refer to a member of my family.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I'm going to, I'm recused due to conflict on A1 and recused on letter B for check numbers C, they're all Cs, 07296, 07408, 07409, 07410, and then the bill list addendum number one, numbers 07464, 05796, 07613, 07811, 07848, and 07772. And then recuse on letter AH for Methesal and Werble and the Law Office of David Rubin. That's all.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tifano?
Yes to all and no on A1.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, recused on the bill list for Methesal Werble.
Okay. Motion passes.
Okay, then the next item on our agenda is the board president's report. I'm going to keep this brief. I do want to once again congratulate all of our award recipients tonight and all of our retirees. Happy Father's Day to everybody celebrating Father's Day this weekend. Graduation is next Friday, so congratulations to all of our graduating seniors. And I hope that everybody has a happy and healthy summer, and we will see everybody back in September before we know it. And then that will move us on to other board business. Are there any other, any board members wishing to speak? Ms. Ratner?
Yep. So I just wanted to share a few, or highlight just a couple of the events that I had the opportunity and pleasure of attending, either as a parent or as a board member, or in some cases both. One was the Unified Field Day. I very much enjoy being able to participate and see all the stuff that goes on there every year. This year I was doubly blessed because two of my children were unified buddies, and so I, I really got to see it from their eyes as well. And it's just honestly an amazing event for our entire school community. And so I really do appreciate that opportunity of being able to attend. And then I also, I did just want to share that when the, last week it was, the chorus, they had the band and chorus trip, and obviously I could speak, you know, pertaining to the band plenty, but my daughter did share with me that the chorus actually received a nearly perfect score, which is apparently almost unheard of. And so, you know, we heard like the actual awards that they received, but that was this numerical thing that's apparently, you know, tremendous in its own right. So I did just want to share that. And then finally, I know we have a lot of promotions and graduations that are coming up. I got to go to the Mill Lake kindergarten show, which was wonderful. My littlest one was performing, which, you know, was kind of bittersweet for me, but then, you know, my son said, you could just have another one, and I said, no, and we left it there. And then next week, I look forward to attending the middle school graduation. I might, I don't, I might have missed something for that. I know we've usually gotten something, but I'll be there as a parent either way, as well as, you know, then the high school graduation at the culmination of the school year. And I just want to congratulate all of our graduates and thank all of our staff members and administrators for a fantastic school year.
Mr. Tifano?
Because of what we heard here tonight, that was read off a pre-written paper in the last meeting, which followed the line, we are going to make a motion to place our superintendent on leave. I've decided that I'm going to take one for the team here. And when I say team, I mean the students and the parents that love our superintendent. If anybody needs to know how to file an ethics charge, email me and I'll tell you how to do it. So here goes. In our last meeting, and I'm not supposed to tell the public this, but I'm gonna, there were four reasons given. And Ms. Chanley, before I do this, do I have your permission? Because I know you're losing sleep because nobody's told you yet, so I'm going to do it. Because I know your staff is probably also upset that they don't know it. And before this continues and people start to lose respect for you, I want the entire town to realize how stupid this is. So number one reason, and I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say who said what, but I'm going to tell you what was said. The first thing that bothered someone was Dr. Chanley wasn't mentored. That was easily resolved because you were a mentor, okay? The second thing was, she doesn't tell me any updates of the programs I vote yes for. Ridiculous. Okay? The third thing was, Dr. Chanley emailed, emailed Mary Ann Friedman and asked that Katie Fabiano and Pete Piro not be part of her evaluation. I'm sure every resident in this town can understand why. And I'm going to tell you what my opinion is. Pete Piro was the director of security here who resigned because he did not want to take direction from a strong woman who was running this district. So he resigned. And he ran for the board as a revenge because he doesn't care about the students in this district. That's my opinion. Okay? Katie Fabiano's husband has made literally a hobby out of destroying people's lives in this town. The superintendent is his number one target. Now, it used to be me, but now it's the superintendent. I'm sorry that, you know, you're number one. I'd rather be number one for you. So I, I can see as a board member how she would feel that she wouldn't get a fair shake from these two people in her evaluation. Now, this was emailed to her. It wasn't done with a phone call or in secret. It was done transparently. And Mary Ann Friedman informed us that this is a common practice of superintendents to relay the message of conflict, they feel, if they don't want to be evaluated by certain board members. So nothing was done illegal there, in my opinion. I'm not a lawyer. There's one sitting right over there. You could ask me. The last and, and most ridiculous one of all, in my opinion, was, yeah, Madam President, nothing. I'm speaking out of the law.
Madam President, point of, point of order.
The last thing was that Shari does the evaluations of her husband's supervisors. Her husband is a tenured employee of the district who's had 20-plus years of excellent reviews. Nothing that Shari can do would affect him negatively or positively at this point. So there's no benefit for her evaluating her husband's supervisors. As it is, her son, who was hired by the previous superintendent, had to quit his position because this board said her hus, her son was conflicted and she could not approve his employment here. Now, like I said, I put it all on the line here. I'm sure I'm going to get some ethics charges. Charlie, just try to stop me because this is upsetting people. This woman has dedicated her life to our students. This woman has dedicated her life to our students. Twenty-plus years, moved here to get closer to the school so she can be around during emergencies and, and be part of the community without having to travel back and forth. Literally moved here to help the students in this district. And from what we've heard here tonight, the, the students and the staff are very happy with the job she's doing. This was done, like some, also some residents said, out of personal vendettas. So I'd like to make a motion tonight to rescind and reinstate her as superintendent and stop the nonsense before this district faces severe litigation that's gonna cost this district a lot of money.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, can we have a roll call on the motion?
Um, sorry, can I interrupt you for a second? Can I, can I make a comment, please? Yes, thank you. Um, I, because this motion is on the table, I do also want to start first by thanking everybody that came out. There's a lot of key board warriors in Monroe. But the people that took the time on their busy weeknight and showed up here to show their support for Dr. Chanley, I am grateful for them. Whatever Mr. Tufano shared and the motion that he made is really the right path for us to take as board members. Like a few taxpayers standing here said, she is a contract till 2028. Any decision we make on her paid administrative leave, given that we've not followed due process so far, is going to cost us litigation money. And all of us are not star on this table is student success and our commitment to the taxpayers to fiscally improve education in town. Any money spent on litigation is money taken away from our students, all of our students. When it comes to personal vendettas, it's the students that are suffering. I have always maintained that I don't take sides when I sit on this seat. I look at the issue, at the impact on students. Whether it is putting any administrator on paid administrative leave or looking at their evaluations, my not star is student success. Dr. Chanley, when she was in acting, I was running for this Board of Ad. Mr. Fabiano wanted her to be the next superintendent. And I told him at that time, because I was running with his wife, that no, Monroe deserves somebody more experienced. We've had a revolving door because people don't have a backbone to stand to the nasty town. But after becoming a board member, I observed, like Mrs. Belko came here and said, I was in the exact same shoes as Ms. Belko. I wanted better for Monroe, I wanted more for Monroe. But I was on that hiring committee of board members and we made the decision we made. And I am proud of that decision. Monroe has only benefited from that decision. I am not Dr. Chanley's friend. I am here for the students. And whatever decision, whatever vote we take here cannot be based on personal vendetta. Mr. Fabiano wanted her to be the superintendent, but because she did not listen to him, in the first couple of months that his wife was on the board and I was on the board, he got angry at her. And then he had a personal vendetta. He went and joined teams with Mrs. Aziz, who's done nothing but destroy education in this town. I don't understand, I don't understand why that page is called Monroe Township Education Page because that doesn't talk about education at all. It only talks about people and how bad people are. People like me who are so bad, who've been sitting on this board, volunteering my time, trying to focus on programs, get more funding for Monroe, but I'm bad, I'm evil. So if you believe Mrs. Aziz and Mr. Fabiano, then we should continue on the path we are on. But if you really want to do something right for the students and make sure our money is not spent on litigation and on paying Dr. Chanley while she sits at home and Dr. Lehman does the job of two people, which I have a whole lot of respect for, but it is not fair, we really need to rescind this and do things the right way. If you have an issue with Dr. Chanley, bring it to her. Give her a chance to correct it, put a corrective action in place, and then take the action that you're taking, taking the action. This is not bureaucracy, this is not dictatorship here. Let's, let's put students first, let's please put students first, thank you.
There's a, there's a motion on the table, so let's do it. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Nope.
Can you restate it? I want to make sure I understand the vote.
The motion was to...
The motion is to rescind.
Whatever, the motion is to rescind.
Rescind and restate, I think he said, Mr. Tufano. If I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Tufano, you can correct me. Uh, I believe you said to rescind and reinstate.
Correct.
Rescind the motion to put her...
Rescind the prior, uh, reinstation, yeah, to reinstate, yes. Immediately.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, um, Ms. Alvarez?
No.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
No.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Pirro?
No.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstain due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
No.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
No.
Ms. Fabiano?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Yay, this cost you a lot of money, you jerk.
Public, um, I'm sorry, other board business?
I had something.
Well, Mr. Pirro and then Ms. DePaine, go ahead, Mr. Pirro.
All right, so first off, uh, let's tell the truth about the evaluation thing if we're gonna say something. So I went to do the superintendent's evaluation. I signed on and it will let me on, so I was conflicted. I called Ms. Fabiano, the Board President. She said that she doesn't know why I'm conflicted. I then emailed Ms. Friedman, I will read my email. I would like to know who advised you to mark me conflicted on Shari Chanley's evaluation? Did Shari Chanley tell you I was conflicted and for what reason? Did Shari Chanley advise you? She spoke with our legal counsel and our Board of Education President. Prior to advising you, I was conflicted. Why wasn't our Board of Education President advised by school boards that I was being marked conflicted? I was embarrassed that I was not given access to do the evaluation and had to spend taxpayer monies for a legal opinion that was not needed because there was no conflict. This is the response back from school boards, Mr. Tufano, so you could get your facts right. Dear Mr. Pirro, thank you for your email. These are the events as they occurred. Three nineteen, Dr. Chanley sent emails stating two, possibly three, board members are conflicted. Dr. Chanley had not stated the evaluation, had not started the evaluation at that time. Dr. Chanley on three thirty-one, sent an email that two are conflicted and were marked as such. Four three, Dr. Chanley completed and submitted the CSA evaluation and all board members received notification on four five. Four twenty-two, email from, uh, Board President stating just important that Mr. Pirro is conflicted and should not be. I was in a district afternoon and eve- and I was in a district all afternoon and evening and responded on four twenty-three. Four twenty-three, I called the Board President, recommended that Board Attorney regarding conflict, Mr. Pirro for attorney's recommendation. Four twenty-four, received email from Adam Weiss, Board Attorney, that in his legal opinion, Mr. Pirro is not conflicted. I was at the office on four twenty-four and responded on four twenty-five. I sent an email to Mr. Weiss thanking him for his opinion and removed Mr. Pirro from being conflicted. Notify Weiss, Board President, and Mr. Pirro on four twenty-five at nine thirty-four AM. So those are the real facts, Mr. Tufano. Do you want to say something? Why don't you read emails first?
That's, that's exactly what I said.
No, that's not what you said.
That's exactly what I said.
I should have been marked conflicted, it cost taxpayer money for that.
You should have banged your head against the wall, that's what you should have done.
Any other?
Yeah, right.
Uh, Ms. DePaine, you wanted to speak, correct?
Well, I didn't want to speak about any of this.
Oh, it's, it's okay, it's other board business right now.
I was, I attended the, um, Armed Forces Day event held at our high school. And it was, what?
The audience is going to maintain decorum.
What's the problem with the audience that I can't say what I want to say?
The audience is going to maintain decorum.
Yeah. I attended and it was really a wonderful worthwhile day to meet all the veterans in our town. And I live in Rossmore and I met about eight or ten of them just from Rossmore. And didn't know we had a Veterans Association in Rossmore. And our high school, I can't remember the lady's name, she did a fabulous job running this program. The high school students were absolutely so attentive to all of the needs, if any, of the men and women who were there that day from the Armed Forces. They sold shirts, uh, they had a collection for, I think, um, Tunnels to Towers, if that's what it's called, if I'm saying right. And it, I came home, um, just feeling so wonderful that I made time to go but to experience what our students in the high school and Dr. Higgins and all his, um, administrators and everyone in charge did to make everybody feel so comfortable and to give them the highlight for Armed Forces Day. So I just wanted to commend them and, and say it was a great day for me, so.
Thank you. Ms. Bora?
Thank you so much. I, I echo Mrs. DePaine's thoughts on Armed Forces Day. It's an, it's an amazing event, one of my favorite ones. Uh, I will miss being there as a board member next year. In response to what Mr. Pirro said, um, about the whole process, I just want to state a simple fact that, um, the, the controversy here is that Dr. Chanley did something she couldn't do, whereas that's not right. Dr. Chanley did what superintendents tend to do. So I'm gonna read the email that I wrote to the entire board after a conversation with Ms. Friedman. And I copied Ms. Friedman here, so just like you read an email, I'm just gonna read, read the email that I communicated my conversation with Ms. Friedman and what she said. Dear fellow board members I spoke to, and this was the day after, on May sixth, I spoke to Mary Ann Friedman, who was kind enough to make time for me this afternoon. And I wanted to share what I learned from her about the superintendent evaluation procedure. According to Mary Ann, it is not uncommon for superintendent to reach out to NJSPFSR to share who in their opinion is conflicted for their evaluation. There are times when the Board President is not aware of this conflict. So superintendents often do this on their own with the NJSPF representative. So what was being hyped as an highly unethical act by Dr. Chanley last night is in fact quite a common occurrence. What happened afterwards is also due process. If the board member does not agree, they can tell the President or the NJSPF representative themselves and are usually asked to get advice from their Board Attorney to prove otherwise. If successful in proving otherwise, they get the chance to evaluate, like it happened with Mr. Pirro. What was being explained in the closed session by the Board President and the Vice President as a highly unethical act by the superintendent is in fact quite usual. I have copied our NJSPFSR to this email. So if anyone would like to confirm my conversation, please do so by reaching out to Mary Ann Friedman. I would like to urge you to understand that not everything that was sent, said in the closed session was factually correct. There are assumptions and personal opinions being thrown around and using that to put the superintendent on administrative leave without any warning or discussion was not the right way to handle the situation. It was not a solution-minded approach. She's a tenured staff member with a contract till June twenty-eight. As board members, each one of us needs to individually understand the process involved and the impact it has on what matters end of the, end of the day for all of us. MTSD and fiscal accountability of our actions to taxpayers. Hoping we can work as a Board of One and do what is right for everyone, and sadly not.
I think just to clarify what you're saying, it's not unusual for the superintendent to reach out to New Jersey school boards, but what is unusual is for the superintendent to conflict a board member without having legal advice first. There was no legal opinion on that.
No, it's not needed. According to Mary Ann Friedman, superintendents have these conversations. And then she told me the exact, I wrote it down in the email.
I'm sure they do have those conversations, but usually there's some legal basis behind it.
I don't have anybody else to seek guidance from but our field service representative. And she is highly qualified.
And our Board Attorney.
No, and she does always refer back to the Board Attorney.
Are there any other?
NJ School Boards has an attorney of the day, so I question why you didn't ask them...
Who would, who was the one who was saying what Ms. Friedman is saying? Trust me, I've spent a lot of time talking to these people in the last month.
Anything else for other board business? Okay, then we're gonna move on to our second public forum. Any, um, member of the public wishing to speak? You have four minutes to do so. State your name and municipality for the record.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Ganeshwar, uh, Salamastla. Address is, uh, two eight three Morning Glory Drive, Monroe, New Jersey. Uh, I recently heard about the superintendent being put on administrative leave. And I feel that, uh, the board members and the board should take careful, uh, consideration in resolving this dispute and not taking any, uh, opinion which will just waste the taxpayer dollars of Monroe Township. I'm a parent, my daughter is in eighth grade, and I feel we have a wonderful school district. And I request the Board to do whatever it can so that we, the taxpayer, are not spending, and the board is not spending hard earned taxpayer dollars to a legal fight which is not required. So I, I really urge the Board to go over this thing, resolve the conflict, and reinstate Dr. Chanley, she's a wonderful superintendent. Last time, I just give you an example, like, we had an issue with the warehouse issue for, uh, in, uh, near my, my community. And then I responded to, I reached out to her and she was very much, uh, available to respond quickly. So I feel that she is a wonderful school superintendent and we want her to be reinstated as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
I have a question for the attorney. Is, uh, what the superintendent is, is that a fireable offense?
I'm, I'm not gonna answer that.
Okay, uh, because to me it sounds like more of like, you know, maybe she should have, maybe she shouldn't, a lot of, you know, uh...
Crap.
Crap, basically, yeah. Thank you, Pete. Basically, it sounds like a bunch of crap. Are you guys all aware that she is a tenured principal in the district? Do you know how much that's gonna cost everybody to keep her here as a tenured principal? That she can't be fired because she is a tenured principal? I hope you all think about that at the end of the day, okay? I don't, I live in Jamesburg, I don't live in Monroe, but my in-laws live in Monroe, they're retired. So I hope you think about every dime, dollar, and cent of the taxpayers and how much it's gonna cost you. And I hope it costs you all personally. You need to think about it, this, because this is all vendetta. You've had this planned since you got rid of me and Chrissy Skirby and the rest of the board majority. So you got your way now, and I hope you're all embarrassed. Hope you lay your heads down on your pillow at the end of the day and know what you're doing.
Chrissy Skirby, twenty-one Freakness Drive. This is about the superintendent's evaluation. We put her on leave over Mr. Pirro being upset that Dr. Chanley told school boards she thought that he was conflicted. A disgruntled former employee who is now a board member is conflicted when evaluating superintendent when they have a negative history with that superintendent. The resignation letter of Mr. Pirro speaks volumes of his disgruntled manner toward Dr. Chanley and myself as the Board President. It was riddled with lies and inconsistencies. He is a conflicted board member to do her evaluation. You fired the Porsio Law Firm last year because they had an ethical compass and would advise this board real legal advice. You hired somebody now who is giving you terrible advice, or not even advice, because apparently you didn't go to the Board Attorney prior to putting the superintendent on leave. There was no discussion, there was no investig- was there an investigation? I mean, to hear that she's put on leave because Mr. Pirro's feelings were hurt that she called New Jersey school boards, which she is legally allowed to do, is absurd. I mean, let's call it what it is. You, you've been looking for something, you found nothing. She's an exceptional employee, exceptional reviews. I bet the review you probably did was good. Her board goals, did she meet them? I, I mean, that's what you're supposed to go on, not Mr. Pirro's feelings. That's now gonna cost us millions of dollars. How do you sleep at night? Usha, how do you take that vote? When you are constantly telling Dr. Chanley how wonderful she is? How your own family asks you if you're in love with her because you say nothing but praise for her? And you vote to put her on leave because your running mate's feelings were hurt? I hope you're okay when the taxpayers have to foot the bill. I can't wait to each one of you are served and sued personally. You deserve it. You deserve it.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, then seeing none, we are, we're going to be having a dis... Do you want to speak? Okay.
There have been some public criticisms of this board alleging that the board had not been transparent regarding the reasons for the suspension of Superintendent Sherry Chanley. As someone who's been following this board for years, my understanding that the board could not discuss confidential personnel matters in public, and if they do, they could be subjected to lawsuit. That said, I would like to discuss matters that are already public. In response to an ethics complaint in 2023, Chanley admitted that she violated the School Ethics Act when she involved herself in the employment matters of her son. She claimed that this was an inadvertent error and that she did not even notice that her own son's employment was on the board agenda. Nonetheless, the School Ethics Commission reprimanded her, and in their ruling, the commission stated, and I quote, "It is a responsibility as a chief school administrator to carefully examine all agenda items prior to board meetings to ensure that she abstains from all matters in which she has a conflict of interest in order to preserve the public trust." Even after this ethics complaint was filed, Chanley apparently continued to involve herself in the employment matters of her family, putting family first, I guess. In 2024, the School Ethics Commission determined that there was probable causes she violated the School Ethics Act, again by involving herself in the employment matters of her husband. This happened a few years after Chanley's actions as a middle school principal prompted the New Jersey Department of Education to compel our school district to develop a corrective action plan to prevent school district employees from misrepresenting their credentials in school publications. Unfortunately, Sherry Chanley's actions have repeatedly drawn embarrassing news headlines to our school district.
Because of you.
It should not shock anyone that someone with this pattern of behavior may have done something more recent to deserve a suspension. I call on the board to thoroughly investigate any allegations of wrongdoing, examine the relevant documentation, and hold Ms. Chanley accountable if she has shown to violate, violated ethical standards again. Ultimately, I hope our community gets the ethical and competent leadership that we deserve. I also have a question for Dr. Lehman. Dr. Lehman, as you continue in this role, will you also support having the Eid holidays as a school holiday on the school calendar along with the Jewish holidays and the Christian holidays and the Hindu holidays? And will you continue to work with the Muslim community and all other communities in addressing issues of discrimination, racism, and bigotry?
So I was a part of, yes, of course, and I was a part of the engagement in the district staff that met with, you know, all the communities, and we certainly would support any holidays moving forward. You know, we have to develop next year's calendar. We typically start that over the summer into the fall, so we will certainly take a look at, you know, anything that's on the table.
Thank you very much, and good luck to you in this role.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, then we are... Oh, yes.
Hi, Rashida Shama, Monroe Township. Not sure if I have to repeat it again, but just in case. I'm fairly certain that everything that was just said was not brought up by Mr. Tufano in terms of what was discussed for the review, so it's actually super irrelevant, and I'm not even sure why we're discussing things that have been brought up in the past. What's the most relevant is Dr. Chanley's evaluation now, what took place last month and what'll take place tonight. It is not, has nothing to do with what she has spoken about in the past, so I just want to make sure that everyone here is aware of that. Thank you, have a good night.
Adam Elias, Monroe Township. I just want to confirm, Mr. Weiss, did you receive the notice that Dr. Chanley wanted her evaluation to be held in public?
Yes.
Is that still going to take place tonight?
I think we kind of just spoke about that, but to the extent that...
I didn't really hear an evaluation of Dr. Chanley.
Yeah, to the extent that the board is going to discuss Dr. Chanley's evaluation, it will be done in public.
Okay, will that be this evening?
Right now.
Thank you.
I'll address the elephant in the room. I wasn't going to say anything, but it's amazing sitting back and listening to a couple hypocrites come up and preach and beg and disregard facts that they know that have transpired in this school district. I'll start first with Mrs. Zawaki over there, who's running for the Board of Education this year. Her husband was just fined by the State Ethics Commission for trying to, again, waste school district money to say my wife is conflicted. Let it be clear, Ms. Skirby can't get it through her head, so she continues to spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. The Ethics Commission has now said it twice. I am Mr. Brian Fabiano, and she is Ms. Katie Fabiano, two separate people. Now, you may live in a household where your husband controls you and doesn't allow you to be a strong, independent woman, but that doesn't happen in my house. Oh, sorry, Mrs. Zawaki, it must be in your household as well. But the funny thing is, you'll sit here and disregard that this is the first superintendent in Monroe's history that's been found guilty of violating ethics. First one, you'll sit here and say employees shouldn't be thrown out, employees should have due process. Remember a guy called Sean Dowling? We were over in the middle, we were over in the middle school. There were hundreds of parents, students, community members that showed up and begged Chrissy Skirby not to fire a man who was loved in the school district, who had a wife and daughter home, on end-stage Lyme disease, sick as hell, they were going to lose their benefits. The guy had months to be able to retire, and they laughed in his face. But then they come up here, boo hoo hoo, we're going to disregard everything that Sherry Chanley has done, because you know what? She's one of ours. Sean Dowling wasn't, Mike Gorski wasn't, every other person that they ran out of this school district. You know what? I helped in the beginning get Sherry Chanley this job, absolutely. That's my right as a citizen in this community if I support someone. And you know what? When she got on the job and she said, I'm not running the school district, Chrissy Skirby is running the school district, I knew instantly she was not the one for the job. When she allowed Chrissy Skirby to steal money from the sports programs, steal money from the booster club...
You will maintain decorum in the audience.
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
You will maintain decorum.
Stealing money from students.
Security, excuse me, security?
My club is so much...
But I want to file a report, say, over him harassing me. I never said anything.
Security, can you escort her out, please, if she can't maintain decorum?
What I seen them do under the purview of a superintendent who closed their eyes when they stood in the parking lot at all hours of the morning, I want me to read Karen Beerman's text when Karen was on the board? That's what we should be talking about, things that matter for the kids. So you're going to tell me when a superintendent turns a blind eye in the public's view for a board member who wanted to be the superintendent but wasn't, and she still chapped over it? She got beat, destroyed in the last election, worse than anybody who's ever run for this board. I think your numbers might have been lower than yours, Sarah, right? Maybe not. But at the bottom, okay, she and this power-hungry group of five, there weren't even 10 teachers in this district here tonight that do support the superintendent. What does that tell you? This place was empty. Look around at other school districts, what happens when these situations happen? Thousands of people show up. This is a stunt and a disgrace.
They're afraid for their jobs because of you.
They say they are.
Our staff is afraid for their jobs.
Are there any other board members, are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
You already know my name, because he likes to say it a lot. Christine Zawaki, Monroe Township. One, I think it's remarkably hypocritical that you allow certain individuals to yell and be inappropriate and be hurtful, and when other people react in a way that might be impassioned because they're irritated by what they're hearing, same thing isn't done. By definition, that is hypocritical. Additionally, when people are walking up to the microphone, you might want to whisper about them a little bit lower, because your mic is very sensitive and it picks things up. It's really an atrocity to see what's going on. People are uncomfortable. People hand things in to be read anonymously, sometimes not anonymously, because there is this overwhelming, like, layering of fear. You are supposed to be here for the public, and you are listening to a brazen few who are allowed to spew their nonsense, and it's absolutely absurd. It's embarrassing. Things are being said that, one, aren't validated, two, I don't know if it's rumors, and three, you're allowing it. Whether you're allowed to say certain things or not, screaming for security or letting certain people say things and other people are not allowed to, that's a problem. It's part of the reason why people don't always show up.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, then we are going to close the public forum and move on to the evaluation discussion of the superintendent that was asked to be done in public. I, Ms. Ratner, should, Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Weiss, help me out here.
Yeah, so this is weird. I'm going to put that out there. We're doing now a superintendent's evaluation in public. It's a public meeting. The members of the public are allowed to be here. Ms. Ratner is conflicted, and so, Ms. Ratner, if I were you, I would leave the room, but that's, you know, that's your decision. We, this is a public meeting, and arguably, like, you could leave the room and watch it on TV if you wanted to, and we wouldn't know and all of that. So technically, you should remove yourself from the room, but that's not a directive. It's totally your call.
So can I ask a question there? So she, she cannot participate, but she can sit and listen, and that's not going to be unethical, and I heard your advice that she shouldn't be in a room where this is being...
All I can tell you is that my recollection of all school ethics advisory opinions that talk about conflicts and conflicted board members indicate that board members are to remove themselves from the conversation, the situation, you know, the location of the conversation. So I can only be guided by that. If it were me, I would leave, but again, I'm not telling anybody to leave.
Totally up to you, Ms. Ratner. There's no action to be taken after this.
Oh, okay. All right. I guess I'll go. I can't say anything anyway, so, that I know for sure, this is just...
And also, you know, by the same token, Dr. Lehman and Ms. Allen, as employees, typically the subordinates of the superintendent leave the room when we're in executive session talking about an evaluation, but again, I'm not telling anybody to leave. They can if they want to.
Dr. Lehman, Ms. Allen, are you guys leaving?
And to the extent they step out, I just suggest that the board appoint someone temporarily to take the minutes, and I would suggest that we do that right now.
Hey, can I have a motion to appoint an acting secretary?
I'd like to nominate Carmen as the acting secretary.
Is there a second? Motion to... Second, second by, okay, motion by Mr. Piero, second by Ms. Bora to make Ms. Alvarez the acting secretary. Roll call or all?
Roll call. Any questions, discussion?
Any questions or discussion about acting secretary?
Roll call.
We need a roll call vote. Ms. Alvarez, yes. Ms. Bora?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
We're voting to make Ms. Alvarez the acting secretary.
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Ms. Fabia, oh, you're last, right? Okay, Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fabiana?
Yes.
Okay. It's at 10:28. It is 10:28. So, board members, you have the evaluation in front of you. It was prepared, as we discussed in the last executive session, all the comments and all the information were copied and pasted into the document. There are additional comments at the end. Feel free to review, and if there are no questions or comments, then I will collect them back, and then if you do wish to review it further, then we can, you can do so at the board office. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the evaluation?
Just need a couple minutes to review, please.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm looking at standard two, Governance, Ethics, and Professional Norms. I do not see my comment in there. I'm not sure, because the next page, page eight... Because the next page, page eight, talks about Standard Three. So Standard Two, and my, my comment started with, "In her three years as superintendent preceded by six months as acting, Dr. Chanley has endured relentless personal attacks." I don't see that. Am I missing something?
Um, I don't know.
There are six comments there. Are we missing a page, maybe? Or is stapled wrong?
Do you want to read the rest of the comment? I don't, I don't know.
I can't, yes. "In her three years as superintendent preceded by six months as acting superintendent, Dr. Chanley has endured relentless personal attacks on her character and performance. Yet in the 15 years I have lived in this community, she has brought more meaningful progress to MTSD."
I see it. "In the 15 years I've lived in this community, she has brought more meaning-" It's probably the, the, it looks like the bullets didn't line up, but it's the second bullet. It's in the second bullet, it says, "Yet in the 15 years I've lived in this community, she has brought more meaningful progress to MTSD than any other leader."
So I, it's not the regular policy and regulation updates. "In her three years as-" That's not part of my comment.
It must have just copied and pasted, huh?
You just just cross it out, like, make an edit.
It's, yeah, my comment is a little, that's all right, you're right, it's there, but it's a little mixed up. But that's all right.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
No.
Nope.
No? Then I'll make, I'll edit that one comment.
That's all right, yeah.
Okay, um, and then we'll-
I have a question for the attorney.
Move on without that.
Um, so when Mr. Tufano shared information that was discussed last board meeting, he didn't really, wasn't really accurate, and I feel like the public got that wrong opinion on what was discussed. It wasn't just the one issue that was discussed. So I don't know if we need to clarify or we can just see.
So, to the extent that, I mean, look, you're certainly able to make whatever statement you want to the public, and to the extent that you feel that it's incumbent upon you to quote-unquote, you know, give, give your version of the facts, you certainly can do that. Mr. Elias has indicated that he's going to be filing something, so the board will have ample opportunity to put its position and make its position known by way of legal filings. And certainly, we can do that as well or in place of. So, so there's, there will be ample opportunity to, to have the different versions known.
Thank you.
Can I, can I mention something?
Sure.
When I spoke to Mary Ann Freeman, I talked to her at length about a couple issues. She told me that even at this type of time of an evaluation, we can change our mind on what we said depending on or pertaining to what other people have said in a group. So she said, I mean, it's down in writing, but we have a turn, a chance to say, you know what? I forgot that, and maybe I should have put that in there. So she did explain that to me, that we can always go back and add and subtract just because we've heard it differently from some of the other board members. Just wanted to let you know, that's what she told me, so.
And if I, if I can add, I don't know if this is something that the attorney or Dr. Chanley are going to speak to later, but one of my concerns was the thing that was brought forward by Ms. Fabiano and Ms. Alvarez, was that how she doing the, the evaluations for her husband supervisors, right? So it, it is definitely a flag. You know, if it's not right, why is Dr. Chanley doing it? We need to follow due process everywhere. So that was a question in my mind, and apparently, when Dr. Chanley was made acting or superintendent, I don't know at what time, she got legal advice on what she can and cannot do or shouldn't do, and this wasn't an advice given to her.
So-
You know, and right now, Mr. Weiss has looked at it again, and it's the advice that he can give to her, but again, not concerning enough to put her on administrative leave. Given that her, the person we're talking about is somebody who's worked for the district as long as her, has never had any issue with those evaluations, I don't see Dr. Chanley using the backdoor method to get his evaluations better. So while I do agree that what is not right should not happen going forward, it shouldn't be a reason to put her on administrative leave is what, what I feel. And you, I don't disagree that when something like that comes up, it needs to be corrected, but I do disagree that it cannot be a ground for putting her on administrative leave.
And just to, just to go off that, I do want to just point your direction to, there was an email that I sent, I shared with the board on August 28th.
April 28?
August 28th, last August, August 28th. Read that document, because in that document, it will explicitly state what you're talking about and that it shouldn't happen.
And, you know, since we're, since we're discussing, you know, this issue, to the extent you want I to identify the document, say what it is so that Ms. Bora-
It's the probable cause notice that the board receives in August from the Ethics Commission.
What was it, what was the case?
Um, 924, that was, C 924.
Sorry, what was it about? What was it about? I couldn't remember from the number.
That was-
You could read the caption. So the title of the case? The case that's being referred to is, and I'm going to butcher the name, and I apologize, so let me actually get my better glasses. Vala Bahani, Bahanani versus Shari Chanley. School Ethics Commission docket number C 09-24 is the email attachment that Mrs. Fabiano was just referring. Ms. Bora?
And there's one of, it doesn't say that she shouldn't be doing evaluations of?
Yes.
Okay. But I, I go back to my point that shouldn't be held as, you know, egregious enough for putting her on paid leave.
Any other questions or comments? Then we are going to move on. Our, there's no closed session, so our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is July 30th, 2025.
Don't we, don't we, so she's, she's not seen it, do we not present it to her?
So what typically happens is now there's going to be a further revision based upon the fact that you indicated-
If I'm okay with that not, not happening, is it fine? Like, I just said that.
Yeah, so typically, what would happen? If everybody at this table was okay tonight-
I'm okay.
With Dr. Chanley's evaluation, it would be provided to her.
I'm okay.
That's the next step.
I'm okay, so you can provide it to her.
Okay.
So what we're saying is, it's going to go back so they can doctor it to me.
No, no, no.
But if you think that it was doctored, you should have spoke about it already, but you did not say anything.
No, no, I, I did try, yeah, so I'm okay with that one sentence being off, that's fine. I don't think you should delay the process anymore.
Okay, no problem. Okay, so our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is July 30th, 2025. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Mr. Piero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good summer, everybody, we'll see you in July.